It was not that one. John, I had no idea what's wrong with your remote.
Are you on? You're muted, George Jet. I will have to, as usual, make you. And I'm only using this thing because I'm really. I'm gonna let everybody in while we're feeling. Oh, you, you, oh, you were able to do it? I can't hear you.
Yeah, you, you, I'm not co-host yet.
No, I'm not hearing anything.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay. Yes, um, I, I can see in the participants list that I'm not your co-host.
Okay, you're coming in very badly, but that's okay. At least the sound works. Uh, I can, as I, I will attempt to get you, um. What I have to do is make you. Thank you. Sorry. Yeah, I just seen you doing all kinds of stuff. Let me just admit everybody.
From New York two, but not just lost.
Make you the co-host there. Okay.
Alrighty.
Their sound is muffing all over here. I hope, I hope everybody's, can you hear us okay?
Yes.
Okay.
And here I am in legislature and all my, I'm always not Ravens fans, of course, and I'm good on Facebook. Tell me, how, how long are we looking at? Well, we have counted seven, three. Okay. So, I won't talk about my girls. There are a lot of things. I suppose our issues here, of course.
And then your name, your friends, so it makes it like personal, and that's makes it difficult.
Sure.
Well, wait, you people stop talking. You're gonna be sending me ta- text messages all over the meeting.
Or I could just throw at you.
Yeah. That's why I left this.
Okay, if everybody can hear me online and, and every in, in the room here. Welcome everybody, um, to our pre-council meeting. Um, I'm here, we're here with Senator Remont King, who has been our state senator in district thirty-nine for twenty years. I don't know. You were gonna say too many. And I hope to continue for many more. There you go. I actually have been a senator since two thousand and seven. I, um, thought seriously about retiring this year, and they've talked me out of it. Yeah, um, and there are too many things that I really feel like I need to stay for. And being in senior leadership, I'm at the table, I'm a female at the table, which is not always heard of over there. But I feel like I can help make decisions, and as long as I can do that, and I'm feeling good, and I'm ready to go, I've still got the energy, I'm gonna do it. Means I gotta run the whole campaign again, through all that silly stuff with all these young kids that think they know more than I do, but other than that. We have several people that have moved into our district to run for delegate, so you're gonna be bombarded by with a bunch of youngsters that know a lot, so. Get ready for your world to be knocked down. Um, I would just wanna talk a little bit about the budget. I chair the, uh, education committee on budget tax, which means I hold the, um, University of Maryland budgets, all the, the university system. I, I hold the, the, the business, I, it's education, business administration, so I have the governor's budget. Um, but I mainly work with the, the various different universities, um, to try and keep them afloat. Very worried about that this year, because we have several, like Frostburg, that's been in really bad financial shape to start with. And now with, with budget problems coming from the federal government. We're just hoping that we're gonna be able to keep people afloat until we can get through all of this. So that's kind of my priority. I've, I've spent the summer, um, visiting the different schools and most of them are in really okay shape. There is just that the, it's not gonna be anything, and there won't be any growth. Um, working with students, um, the, the enrollment is down everywhere, because people are just worried about tuition and paying loans and that kind of thing. So we're, we're just hoping that we can kind of get us through the next few years and I mean, getting an education is just as important or more so now than it was before. We're really working with, um, a lot of the federal workers that have lost their jobs. Montgomery College has several classes going to retrain people in new jobs. And, and they're packed, every class is packed, and so they're adding more and just trying to, to work with, with people to get them retrained to have jobs. This AI has just replaced so many jobs that, uh, we've, we've gotta find a way for people to be able to survive. One thing that's killing me right now, I'm sure you all have seen it. We've got the up county hub that's giving food out to families. And, um, back a year ago, we were serving maybe two hundred families on Friday. Well, last Friday, we had over eight hundred families lined up on Apple Ridge Road in Montgomery Village. All the way down Apple Ridge Road, around the corner, around Montgomery Village Avenue. And these are not homeless people, these are people like you and I, that have lost their jobs and don't have any cash. Um, so, I mean, as long as the money is lasting to be able to help these families out, we're okay, but that can't last forever either. So, we have a lot of things to worry about locally, but, I mean, the county's on board with all this, but the state's gonna have to jump in there and we're gonna look at different priorities that we have. I mean, everybody's gonna have to look at it. You know, I, I was kind of laughing about it today, and it's not funny. I have so many people calling me and sending me emails asking for m- funding for, they wanna do this building, or they want a new program, or they and it's, and it's kind of like, are you listening to the news? Um, because we're not going to be able to do that kind of thing for a couple of years until we, we can afford it. What I'm finding, I have a lot of people, they're pretty mad about us raising taxes, and we've tried really hard to not raise anything more than we have to. And I don't see us raising anything this year. Um, but what that means is, we're gonna have to prioritize what we've got. People want us to not raise any taxes, don't raise any fees, but they don't wanna do away with anything. And, uh, we've, we've, we've gotta be able to do that. So, uh, that's one of the big things that we're trying to work with now. I've, I've got people calling me all the time wanting to start a new program. One of my priorities is early childhood. We've really found that putting money into daycare centers, um, preparing daycare directors to be able to run it, to educate them so that they can get licensed. That's one of the best ways for us to spend the money, so that people can go back to work and afford it, to these childcare tax credits. Um, that's one of our, our biggest issues, I think, is, uh, helping out those, those parents. Um, we were able to put, I kept my notes from the budget for last year. Our, the budget was sixty-six point nine billion dollars, our operating budget. Was four hundred million dollars less than the year before. Uh, we put fifteen point six billion dollars into funding for Medicaid. Now, we don't know how much of Medicaid is going to be cut. We plan on putting more in if we have to. We know that that is a number one priority, and we have to have healthcare for our residents. So, that, uh, is one of our major, um, priorities. Uh, public schools is another one. But one of the things, I don't know if any of you are familiar with the blueprint, I'm sure you've all read about it. The way it's written right now, it's not really sustainable, um, because it's just so expensive. There, we've done a lot with early childhood with it, that's really good. But Montgomery, good old Montgomery County, it's gotta be out there first. Um, it's in the bill that a, a new teacher would start at sixty-five thousand dollars a year, which is wonderful, but it's not sustainable for the school system. So, of course, Montgomery County's already done it. So now, we've gotta figure out how to maintain that somehow, so that these teachers, we don't go back on what they've been hired for. But we don't wanna end up raising class sizes and having to lay off people, so that these new employees can make their sixty-five thousand dollars a year. Plus, people at higher levels are making much more. So, that's one thing that we're trying to work with the county on, to, to find a way to fix that. Most places across the state can't afford it anyway. I mean, if you pay sixty-five thousand dollars to a new teacher in Garrett County, that person is making more than anybody else in the county. And that's, it's, that's just how, how it works in the state. So, the blueprint is gonna have to be messed with a little bit. Transportation, I don't know how you all feel about transportation, but it's one of the things that I argue with, uh, with some of my colleagues about all the time. Uh, the traffic on two seventy is so bad, and it's, and I'm hearing from companies that can't, they can't hire anybody to come here, because they don't, they don't wanna do that traffic. Try to find a way to fix it. Um, part of our delegation and all people down county, buy only transit. And, and, and that's great down county, but up here and in Germantown, it's, it's just not feasible, it's not convenient to our residents. So trying to work with my colleagues and, and the governor and, uh, the transportation department, trying to find a way to, to relieve some of the, the transportation issues. The, the, um, uh, what's the bridge down county? Um, American Legion Bridge is a disaster. And would love to see something happen to that, get it fixed before there's a disaster there, because it's gonna happen. It's ready, but it's ready to just fall apart. Um, but what we've been told, and I don't know if any of you are part of this, um, there apparently are so many lawsuits that that is one of the main reasons why we haven't done anything with the American Legion Bridge. Yeah. Um, it's the people that don't want more transportation, they don't want more roads, so they're fighting it. Um, so somehow the community has to get together on it, because I just feel bad for people that have to do that traffic all the time. Um, and anyway, when Larry Hogan was, was governor, his transportation guy took all the transportation funding money and spent it up in western Maryland. So there is no transportation money right now, which, yeah, so there's that issue. See what else. Reducing crime, you know, double years ago, we were, um, in Indianapolis and, and really got pushed to, to support legislation for, basically it was Baltimore City, but they really pushed us to, to, um, support legislation that kind of reduces any kind of discipline or, or anything with, with youth that, that create, that, that commit crimes. To the point where they know that they can do just about anything and get away with it. So, a- and, and I, I'm not saying you gotta, you know, lock every kid up, but we've gotta find a way to get past this crime spree that our kids are on. Um, so, working on that, I'm really working hard with my colleagues in Baltimore City, trying to get them to, to see that we've gotta work this out together and, and we can be an example for the rest of the country, because everybody's wrestling with it. There's gotta be a way to face that. So that's an issue. Nursing home, uh, issues, I don't know if any of you have anybody in a nursing home right now, but we're finding out that the nursing homes, like, never get inspected. There, and so there's, there are so many issues, so many complaints from people, and, and there's got to be a way that it doesn't cost that much, that we can get our nursing homes under control, because they're just not right now. There's, um, the standard of care is so bad that I hear complaints from around this area, but all over the state. So we've gotta find a way to, uh, uh, working on that. Now, safeguarding the right to vote is, we're hoping that, that we're not gonna have this, the paper ballot thing, or the, uh, mail-in ballot thing taken away. The president, um, is trying really hard to just have us go back to the old machine with the paper trail and just on election day and all that kind of thing. And, uh, I, I kind of feel that the mail-in ballot thing has worked pretty good for the, a couple of times we've done it anyway. So we're hoping that we can hang on to that and, uh, move forward with that. Um, expanding affordable abortion care, um, you know, that's a, it's been a kind of a, um, a priority for Maryland anyway, is to, to protect the rights of women. Um, we just don't wanna chip away, we've worked so many years to get to where we are, we don't wanna lose all that. So that's, that's another issue. Oh, one of the bills that I put in that we got, and probably saw on the news here just recently. Um, we had a police officer that was right at, at, um, Watkins Mill Road, the interchange, and a guy aimed at him, and, and and he's lost both of his legs, wow. And he's such a neat guy, he came to Indianapolis every time to testify, and, um, so we, we got a reckless, um, negligent driving bill passed, so it, it's, it's gonna somebody doing that, it will really cost them. Um, you know, Sergeant Cat will get his legs back, but he is back working full-time with these legs, and he's, um, what is he, he's doing, he's doing something for the Olympics, he's neat, he's an amazing person. So, yeah, um, uh, let's see, what else did I do? Oh, one of the things for, for, um, students that don't graduate the regular way from, uh, high school for, to take the GED. We were the only state in the country that would, um, only allow the test to be taken in English. So, we've changed it, so we're kind of going with the other, the other states, you can take it in Spanish now. Because we found so many kids that can work, they just might not be fluent in English, but if they can work and be fluent in their own language, they should get a high school diploma, so that's, that, that's, uh, what we're doing for that. Um, I think that's about it to start with, but what I wanna know from you is, what are the issues in Mon- in, uh, Washington Grove that we need to help you with? Sounds pretty good at letting me know, on a regular basis, when there's something that's going on. Um, but if there's anything that we can, we can, uh, flag and help you out with, that's kind of the main.
Is there, is there another report with all the good news? Or is that a, this is the good news sign?
A little bit about how that you're fighting back against, you know, you mentioned voter suppression, and there are a lot of other things that are happening, or attempting, that they're attempting. What can the legislature do, and what are you doing?
Well, it's, we're kind of sitting around the table quite often, um, trying to make sure that we're being smart about it. Uh, the governor's been out there, you know, kind of smacking with the president, and all it does is make the president mad and wanna take more away from us. So we're trying to find a way to protect ourselves, to stand up, but not do anything that's gonna harm us more. That's, we just were talking about that constantly, is how do we do this right? Um, and if you ever have any ideas, we're, we're open, because we, you know, like I said, we, we're trying to do this right. We've got, especially women's rights issues, that they would take away in a minute. Um, there's just, there's so much that they'll just take away, that we, we've, we've gotta figure it out. So, I mean, we're on it, we just, uh, have to do it right.
I have a question about schools, because you mentioned that.
Yeah.
So I have a couple of really good friends who are school teachers, and, and in lower grades. And they, how they, I mean, this is happening to them, it's not like you're saying, that there, there's inappropriate, in my opinion, um, children being put in regular classrooms. And the disruption is unbelievable, the expense, when I hear about the, when I was at school, fifty in a class, one person teaching, and the, the, uh, all these helpers getting paid, all, it's so much money, um, going in there.
Yes.
I mean, is somebody looking at a way?
We have forever, because, yeah, but, but here's the problem. If you're the, the parent of a special ed student.
Right.
You want that child to have every single advantage that every other kid has. And the special ed community is really firm on bringing those children in to be as normal as they possibly can. Problem is, it, it does disrupt the rest of the class. It's a hard one.
Yeah.
I mean, it is, because, uh, you know, I've had my kids in, in classes where they've, it's really been disruptive. But I always bring myself back to the fact that if I, if that was one of my kids, I would want them to have every advantage that every kid has. So that's, that's what the problem is, is trying to find the middle of that.
Right, but it's one, you have twenty-five, and you have one person.
I know.
And the things that happen in those classrooms is insane.
Well, I have a granddaughter in middle school, but I am pulling my hair out over, because the kids are just so completely out of control.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, middle school is anyway, but, but it is, she comes home telling me the craziest stories of things that happen. Um, like, the other day, the teacher, the Spanish teacher was screaming at them, that she, what she was done since school started, and makes them put their heads down, and turns out the lights, that's the Spanish class. Um, so, yeah, um, so then, the, the other day, she called for the office for security, and nobody answered her, so she left the class to go look for security. So the office called, and one of the kids said, oh, that was a mistake, and so the office didn't come. You know, but it's that kind of thing, it's like there's nothing happening in Spanish class. Uh, and I've talked to the superintendent about it, he, you know, he gets it, but, but he, but how do you fix it? I don't know, because middle school has always been kind of crazy to me anyway, but the kids are out of control, I mean, like, out of control. And you can't legislate, you can't legislate parenting, you can't legislate for parents to make their kids behave, you can't do that. So I don't know what the answer is.
Yeah, that is a big part of the problem.
Yeah.
The parents, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Quite a useful reason you would segregate. And we disrupt.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay.
And they don't go disrupt themselves.
Yeah.
And the, the, it's usually.
Do that too, yes, but Montgomery County Public Schools, this is Montgomery County where everybody sues. And that's, that's, that's what they're dealing with in the school system is lawsuits.
I feel that liar and nuns, to know people.
Problem that I'm seeing, that I'm not real thrilled about, is they, they've hired a lot of, um, of federal workers. And you can be a really good scientist, you can be a really good politician.
Yeah.
That you haven't really been trained on how to teach in a classroom, it's disastrous. You did it probably ten years ago or more, and it didn't work then, it's not gonna work now. But they're talking about they're ninety-four percent full with teachers, and they're all excited, but, but they're not necessarily qualified teachers. That's a problem.
Yeah, we may be picking it up only there on the.
I see Ken McCaffrey up there.
We, we do have, we have one, we have an armoring issue with, with stormwater management in Washington Grove. Now, you guys helped us out, can I just say, the year of our last, at the, with, with a state bond, um, award.
Yeah.
A grant award.
How much was that?
Two, two hundred and fifty, one hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay.
So that's great, and it's been, it, it is being helpful, I'm just spending it actually this year.
Okay.
Thanks. But it, 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 it's enabled us to partly address issues we have in the residential part of the town. But our, uh, the real environmental wood, wood forest damage is occurring in our, one of our woods, the west woods, which, which, which takes all the water that comes off of half the town, and, um, takes it all into, uh, the system that eventually runs to West, uh, Lake West.
Oh, really? Okay, okay. Uh, well, when I, I was on the Montgomery Village Board at one time, I remember discussing that whole thing about what, there's a lot that flows into Lake West.
Um, it's the major water, um, treatment, water.
It's affectionately known as Duck poop lake.
But, um, the, the problem is the, in, in our, since we've been having storms, it's raining weather, we get larger flows, and it, it's a road, it's a, a bunch of channels uh, in, in our west woods, and we need to do something about controlling the stormwater. There's no option, it has to go around, it has to go through the woods. Um, we have a current project here in the residential area, but we cannot reduce the flow materially, because we don't have room to put a pond, a, a collection pond, and our, and our, our soil is, well, absorbed, and even when we were to do bio, bio soils, and encourage the soil to, um, absorb it, uh, typically our soil is immovable, you know, kind of. So, what we can do is improve the, the, the streams that go through the woods. And unfortunately, that's an expensive channel. We have a study, we just received the results of a study, which proposes, um, in a, in a sort of an overview engineering way, a solution. And what we, and we intended, that was excellent, because we need that information to go out and get funding. We're probably looking at one and a half million dollars.
Okay. But you gotta be out there asking for it, because everybody else is gonna be asking too.
That's right.
So you gotta ask now, I mean, you gotta, right, get your bid in, yeah.
So, um, we were, we can, are, are obviously looking for any assistance. E- even if it's just, you know, who, who, who should we direct our?
Okay.
We've gotten a lot of, some information, but it's useful to get it at multiple places, you know, where we should be addressing our request, where there is grant funding. Um, there's still federal money floating around, you know, um, which may, our project may be out more too, but, but, um, you know, and it's not like we expect the money next spring.
No, but, but, but it's not gonna get better by itself.
No, and that's the problem, that's exactly it, it's been getting worse, and that's where you, as, as always, a lot of the. So, you know, you can expect to hear from me or.
Well, it's supposed to, but I, I need to have some kind of a request, so that we've got it. so that we've got it on the table and so that they know that.
Right. Our, our intention is to put together a, um, a slightly detailed proposal, um, which would, uh, which has some, you know, no expertise behind it as a solution, but isn't, uh, by any means of engineering and then have a fully, um, engineered plan and.
One of the, one of the advantages that we have right now is Craig Zucker is Chair of the Capital Budget Committee and I'm on the Capital Budget Committee with him. So if there's any money that comes available, we can grab it.
Right.
But I've gotta have that.
Right, okay. And that's, so we're, yeah, our territory is, and we've been, you know, we don't have any staff.
I know.
But so we're, 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 we do have some very dedicated volunteers. Patty here, Chair of the Woods Committee and has been for a whole bunch of years and with a bunch of other people. They, they post on here, a bunch of people are, um, um, you know, Joey's involved with me, and lots of people are involved. Are, are, we'll, we'll, we'll put together a what we believe is a, a proposal that makes sense and we'll get a copy and we'll do our best.
Yeah, yeah.
Quick comment, um, to add on to that, if that's okay. Would we be wise or would it be good advice to try to partner like with Gathersburg? They're doing stormwater management projects as well. And we realize that what happens is you try to fix your problem and it basically becomes somebody else's problem.
Right.
Sort of.
No.
So we, we have some meetings coming up soon, I think, just with Gathersburg for variety reasons with the, with the mayor. So I was just wondering because in unity there's strength and if there is money out there, maybe if we kind of team up. I don't know that.
And then if you have to go off on your own, you can do that too.
Yeah, so just throwing that out there as an idea that does it look like a stronger proposal if it comes in as a sort of more regional approach because we're all sharing the same problem?
Right, right. But then if I'm gonna channel, grab some money, I'm gonna, I'm gonna grab it for my district.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Cause I've got one more here.
I have one that, um, actually Julie brought up to me and I'm working with, um, Cindy Katz on. The, you know, the county's come up with these, uh, no turn on rights.
Never heard of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, um, yeah, but so she's talking about what's the road out here goes on to, uh, and trying to turn right onto Shady Grove Road. And, and so, um, we have to address so it was somebody's great idea. They did a project in like two thousand twenty-three and came up with this idea that it would save lives. That's the reason they're doing it, but, um, all I'm hearing is complaints of people, so. Yeah, so they're gonna have to go back and address some of it.
Good. That's good.
Who's that? Yeah, so, so the other one is we are, um, you know, we, we have a, have a playground here in town and it has, uh, it's, it's a, it's a, a pretty, it was an attractive place under the woods. A few trees, uh, over it, um, and and we put some new pieces in over the years, but we also have a lot of old pieces which are near and dear to, uh, all the old timers and not so near and dear. That, that, let me rephrase that, um, the people with, with children, we'd like to see some modern duration on our playground. So we're, we're, we're just in, in the process of creating a playground master plan.
Okay.
Because, you know, playground use across a lot of my.
Yes, they do. And we've, Craig, um, Zucker and I, in the last five years have picked, um, actually we've given each one of our, our, uh, discurs and we playgrounded one of their schools. And so we could just add Washington Road on the playground, so.
So that's where we're going. We will have a plan to to justify the funding.
Okay, okay.
And it's not a, a, a old ones plan, it's a, a, a phase.
Well, if I can possibly get that for you this year, we will do that.
Well, we, you may be able to.
I mean, that, that's, it's, we've still got the pot of money. So we're kind of proving what you wanna do. And, and just in case, if I can possibly do it, I'll grab that this year.
Okay. I hope our playground people are on, on here, um, listening to that because, uh, we have to act when we have our opportunity.
Yes, yes, for sure.
Right. Um, okay. Um, anybody else?
Is it him? Lisa has a question.
Oh, do we actually have someone? Yes, Lisa, go ahead, Lisa.
Good evening. Thank you for coming to talk to us. Um, just real quick, and obviously I'm gonna ask this question, probably the rest understanding that these have really hard times.
For some reason, you're not coming through very clearly.
Okay, can you hear me now?
No.
It's breaking up a lot.
Okay, let me type it real quick.
There should have been a sheet in there, Kathy, with the, uh, of instructions of what to do. You know, I was, this is the first time we've had a, it's because that's not on. It wasn't you, cause you got a friend of that.
And there wasn't anything, it's just. But I think someone else is.
Let's see, let's try, let's try. Try it again. Listen, just try, say, say, uh, hello, my heart or something.
Can you hear me, John?
No.
Yeah.
Type it in the chat.
I did.
While we're trying to figure it out.
Yep.
Uh, yeah, and it'll only go to me and I'll be.
Then you'll fall and you're not allowed to fall.
But, um, I cannot understand why that. Nothing, nothing has changed here.
We used to make phone calls when I was a kid, it worked perfectly.
Oh, that's great.
The nice thing you got going on.
No, it wasn't in here. I don't. Do we still have at the state level, any of the federal funds, like any funds, infrastructure production?
They're, they're still selling it.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Well, the UC thing here in Cali? Yeah, you don't believe how much money I've kinda executive day back to the federal government on roads because he did not want anything done to two seventy. I, so. Want anything done with roads.
Why?
He feels if he, if they can make you miserable enough, it just sell your car. Are you serious? Oh, sending really?
Oh, he's.
They wanna do, plus they wanna do bus track and transit, which, and just don't see anybody riding the buses. Really good. Yeah.
Well, if they worked and they were.
They're not, they're not in our area.
Would you rather I came to it?
Do you have any feedback or lessons you were concerned about ice rage?
A lot. Um, and we have one, one gentleman I don't remember his name. Um, in the county who has a pretty close relationship with ICE so that we can call him directly. My staff has his name. Um, but he is, he's gotten to know them and they've talked to him about where they're gonna go and that kind of stuff. Um, it's still got everybody scared to death, which does. Um, I did the Gathersburg parade last week and we went, go to that. It was a huge crowd and they were almost, I didn't see any Latinos at all. They're either hiding or they're gone. And they used to be such a huge part of that parade. Um, that to me is just ridiculous, but, yeah.
Okay. Is there anybody else? Sorry for. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
You're so very welcome. And if, if things come up, don't hesitate to contact me. Something going for it.
You always sorry me. Yeah, you're on our feed, Al.
Thank you for staying in there and fighting for us. I can't imagine what it's like to show up every single day in face of death.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
But I, um, I just feel like, and they, they say that, that there are not a lot like me left in Indianapolis. We have a lot of young people that run for office. And especially since that guy in New York, uh, won the primary, the associate guy. That seems to be a really the, the younger group thinks that we're leaning in that direction and I just don't see it. I don't see it in our area. I just, I don't see it for the Democratic Party politically here, but, um, yeah, so I, it's one thing that I just kind of work against. Um, somebody's gotta have some common sense. You just have to. And, and we're, we're seeing it more in the House. These, these young guys come in. It used to be when you got elected, you would kind of stay quiet for the first year that you were there and learn figure out how to do a bill and how to get things done. Not anymore. There's, they don't believe in authority. They come in the first year, they wanna be chairman of the committee, they wanna get everything done. And, you know, we always say the Senate is the, the adults in the room, um, just what we do, but, uh, we're really seeing this, this younger generation and they're smart as anything and they know all the technology that there is. But they don't have the experience and they, they, they don't know what they don't know. So I just feel like they need me there to need a balance. So that's just what I am. Yeah, yeah. So, yeah. All right, John's gonna throw me out.
Call me anytime.
Okay, looks like we have fifteen. Was using god awful sound.
So is that working now?
Yeah.
Or it looks like it. You know, I think that's the technology one-on-one.
No, eleven thirty, yeah.
Just depressing.
It's very depressing. They can walk sideways, fuck with it.
Funding that's available that we've actually, they'll pick up this year.
Yeah, that's the, about the playground thing.
Yeah.
You break it up, I'm gonna get something out there.
No, that'd be good.
Do it. I still don't, I don't know how these guys go to work every morning, day after day.
That's interesting, interesting.
I'm gonna ask you something. Such an old lady, I had to buy a printer down at the beach. I have to print everything else, I can't. I just, I'm just a paper. I mean, I can't do it to.
Well, I mean, that's, you know, that's not the way, that's not the way
I, I brought bricks.
Yeah.
Oh, you don't need to do that.
I guess it's good for him to see how things work.
How things get bol, bollock stuff.
This is John. And, and you know. Yeah, so he had a little, uh, it just stayed for three, that's okay. I know, it's still.
Because we're not aware of it. Nope, there was no, um, criticism of what you guys actually did. The, the, the issue, there, there are two issues. One is that the whole process yeah, it's because it was not downtown, it was not just a bridge, but it was a good one. And, you know, I think, and he, nobody's objecting to the fact that there's a bridge there or that anybody was willing to put in the effort to actually build one that would work. So, you know, that, that, that was. Sorry?
I think I regret it.
But I'm getting to that because, because it wasn't. All right, when people look at it, for myself, um, for where it is and because it's a public, a huge bridge. You know, if you, you're watching about it or if I'm answering, it's fine, but the fact we have, we all, we have let's say a higher order, but we have to consider how safe the, the installation is. So, and that's, that's a whole thing.
This is what it's, that's all, that's, I want to say a lot about that.
Uh, and it's not like anybody built this to be unsafe.
Okay, one third of process.
No, I just, I, I talked to several engineers through the process to make sure it's up to industry code and I wanted to talk about that.
Right, and nobody feels it's not up to industry.
So it was. That's some contradiction here, yes.
No, I think there's nobody, because, um, okay, we have to worry about it, 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 it being safe, not only under all kinds of conditions, but also for all the so, um, at the very least, um, for people who are that length of bridge. Not too much longer, you can walk the process fine, especially when it's dry and everything's fine. But for people who are less, you know, more, more happy. But I, I think, I think we're happy, really different, disagree about that. The, the fact is, um, for whatever those standards of British, I, I think our town would have um, asked for a few, a few additional things. Safety features. All right, so, you know, I can go through them, that's, I was gonna go.
No, I hear, but nonsense, but I, it'd be tragic if you had a.
So, I'm, um, you know, I, I was serious, nothing against the it's just that if we had looked at it, your, your, the safety plan, engineer, the review plan, the, I'm not sure. We would simply have looked at it to the point of view of, well, what happens, what happens after a few years, it's slippery. It's a three foot drop. You know, a plane or something else, you know, the drop is like a foot. Uh, it's just wet and stuff like that. So you don't worry about people falling. If you get hurt, that's sort of a fall. So, if this is just the kind of concern, we're just, it's not for everybody and it's not under all sorts of, but which we would have. And here's, here's, here's what I'm proposing to do. I think in a way because it could be easy, this man, it's still gonna be easy to pull that, well constructed from, from that point of view. So my suggestions are that we put a railing on it on one side, we put a tow board, tow board on the other side. So my suggestions are that we put a railing on it on one side, we put a tow board, tow board on the other side, you know, a tow board is. So I think you run into us this thing about like this. The bank that that sits on is under unfortunately can further erosion. So we need to do something to prevent that, so we need to put some riprap or something there to. We're gonna have a bridge there, I mean, if it was just being. Worry about it, but when you cross it, and then I think the bridge needs to be more firmly, more stably. On the banks, not just me, I say I, others as well think this may be true. So the bridge boards are, don't put enough, it's about this much as on either bank.
I I dug two feet into each bank, I installed concrete footers to make sure that it was stable, I leveled them properly. Uh, and I installed on top, I used waterproof tape and then I packed earth around it to make it not move.
Except I know at least one individual could pick it up.
Yeah, I was kinda confused about that. I had a team of five to six scouts working at different times and. We were trying to move and move at the bridge at one point to make sure that we could get some more material underneath it and it was not possible at all, so I. I would love to see the whole crew's here, but not at all.
Okay, well, um, in any event, I I, you know, one poss- another possibility is simply to extend. The the transfer spaces would hold on in condition, whatever, five, four, five feet on each side. And then um, make sure that's stable anchored probably the same way you did it, maybe with something going over. I'm not an engineer, so uh. Anyway, so that that was the issues with the bridge. Per se and completely modifiable. And after we went to this meeting tonight, which is coming up quickly. Um, assuming everybody was in agreement, um, I was gonna approach your coast. See if you wanted to do the modification, which isn't probably be a huge amount of work, I don't know what else you guys have going, I know schools burden and all that crap, so. You may or may not want to get be involved, but you build it. To project, you should certainly have a great first first um. Attack on 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 these modifications. I would go pay for all.
Well, unfortunately, this one now, my project has. Denied essentially by the beneficiary, this now risks my opportunity. Because the process and the the attitude towards the bridge from the community and as well council. And I'm unsure if I'm qualified to be an Eagle Scout because of uh what's happened in relation to the project. These are all things I was probably talking about today.
Right, well, it's um, I don't know what to say about that. When you're, you know, I I I think you were ill. Ill advised. Because when you do stuff on public property, you have to get the approval of whoever is responsible for that built property. I mean, they may look the other way, maybe they quite care less, and and that's certainly true. Frequently, and on the other hand, it may be some some, a matter of. You know. Insistence to 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 go through the approval process. Here, um, I I I I do not believe, I. But let's see what happens now, but I personally would go tell your scout master or whatever I have to tell. That you were assured that everything was fine, what what are you supposed to do? You know, call the governor?
Well, there's there's several steps in the process, so there's Potomac District Council for Delaware, Maryland and some parts of Virginia that has to go through and approve my project. And Lawrence McNeese, who was my point of contact person for our area, the Potomac Council, I went and I got approval from him. But after I go back with my review of the project and I give context about what happened, it might be denied as having been viewed. That the project was not fully completed to the likes of the community and therefore the representation of the community.
Well, I don't know how we can do it and run around a region.
Unfortunately, there's nothing that can be done about that now.
The. I kind of hoped. In 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 a more reasonable world, this would never have reached your attention. I don't know, I I kind of hoped that it had not.
Obviously.
Because because um, you know, this is, you know, well after the fact, surprise to you. Um, I'm, you know, surprised to the town, fortunately. And, you know, we we can't. There are several reasons I need to do something. Possible, we could just leave the bridge there and I mean, what do we do? When you declare that we need to approve this safety aspect, I don't know what would help in this process. But, you know, because. It it has. Their concerns, I mean, there's definitely more water more. On that string, but until we do something, which we're hoping to. Anyway, you're gonna have a meeting here. Um, sitting on. I suppose we can. We have a public, we have a public. Part of this, we're here allowing three minutes. Georgette, are you there? Is somebody there?
Oh, I hear.
You have to put them up.
Anybody who can use their audio.
Rob's here, I'm here.
Now we have new nets.
Sorry?
We have new nets.
New nets for the pickleball?
Yeah, they would fall apart or something. I guess the.
Is actually moving around.
Since Steve doesn't work for the town.
Marilyn. Marilyn, can you unmute and say a few words?
Yeah, hi. What do you want me to say?
Yeah, yeah.
Testing, testing one two?
Tell us about the weather.
It's chilly, I'm in a sweatshirt now.
No, it's bad.
Yeah, the sound is still bad.
That's not this.
It's not the problem now.
I mean, that's. How could, how could that be bad?
Well, it's something like that is often the wifi connection.
I wonder.
Connect again?
Yeah, it's it's.
Everybody has. Not good.
It was, it's just most likely the wifi connection coming in.
Say, for what it's worth, the sound is good for me.
You're just breaking up, but you can hear us perfectly.
I can hear you all perfectly.
We're not breaking up.
No.
I don't think there's a zoom setting that affects sound control, sound quality, so okay.
Yes, I would say the same thing. This is Georgette, I would say this.
When I was, I said, did you think Jimson would talk forever? Did you think Jimson would talk forever?
Okay.
Okay, we have better.
Yeah.
Alright.
Okay, I was saying that I was having no trouble hearing either you or Marilyn.
Let's put that, I'm bringing exposure.
Good thing, um, Shelley was, Shelley was.
Not in the picture anymore.
There might be some feedback now. Yes, there is.
That's, that sounds like.
You're not playing, I'm not.
I like the new view of the council room very much.
So John, are you on the zoom on your computer?
Do you have? We're the only ones that have these problems.
No, it's. Basically, everybody like, this should sign off and sign back in again.
Yeah. At least you don't get torn over these meetings like we do. At the plant information. Yeah, ah, it was hideous, and it happened, then we always got off and get. And first I got back in again.
Having these disruptors show up and just.
No, the person was a person's name, and the entire screen was just one of them.
So here's.
Nothing killed me. Try and get my.
And then next, you know, they would just start blasting nasty stuff.
That's why, that's why.
That's why.
That's totally easy, you didn't mind all of this, guys.
Well, you also gotta be careful about letting people in, if you don't.
Don't recognize them.
Yeah, that was, that was like a little bit of this experience.
I asked somebody to identify themselves.
Yeah, so.
Yes.
Yeah, well, you could have had, you could have had a more interesting meeting. It was hideous, it was really. It was really, uh, it was really exciting because you have no power over your, they took, they took over the Zoom meeting.
Okay, um, if everybody can hear, we'll start the town council meeting right on time at seven thirty five.
Yeah.
Uh, as always, um, so this is the call to order. First item of business is approval of the agenda, which I hopefully will be able to show everybody. Um, this is the agenda that goes more or less on uh distributed. Um, the the only significant change I'm ma- making to it is here in um. In um, agenda item nine, where I've reversed. The A and the B under managing projects on town property encouraging initiative in our town of volunteer. Otherwise, it's the same. So if I can get a, well, we don't, uh, yeah, a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Anybody else have comments? Okay, in that case, uh, Rob is on, Rob is there?
I am, yes.
Great, so Rob is attending remotely.
Yeah, so I'm out of town, hi everyone.
Hi, Rob.
Or is that, are you remotely attending? Okay, uh, all in favor then of the uh approval of the agenda here as shown?
Ayes.
Alright, unanimously uh approved. The next item is the minutes of July fourteenth, which um we're kind of in a little bit incomplete this month. So you all hopefully took a look at them, I can put them up if you want. But um, is there any um, any comments um, or objections to anything in the minutes? Okay, then by consensus, the minutes are approved. Unfortunately, I do not have the minutes from August. Things got a little out of hand to. To to finalize those, they will be here in October and hopefully the September minutes will be with them. Okay. Um, normally, we would now move on to um the public appearances, but because of the uh. Significant kerfuffle uh that developed over um this uh nice looking bridge that appeared in the West Woods. To uh unfortunately, to almost everyone's surprise, with a few exceptions. Um, so, um, I need to bring up something with that. For this, too many things here. Okay, so uh today, unfortunately, you know, later than I would have liked, I um. I uh put together what I hope would be useful to try and make it fairly smoothly go through. The the controversy that was raised of this. This situation, and so um I'm, I don't have a document because I didn't have it. Prepped, but I will, I need it, I I wanna use it just for a second, apologies for the delay. So. Okay. Let me stop this here, let me uh just bring this up, uh I did distribute it, it was distributed uh to everyone. In the council, it's in the materials um um document folder now and Patty was kind enough to. To send it out on the listserv, so um it's definitely um. Out there. So um, basically, I'm not going through this whole thing, this is for anybody to look at. What I wanted to do was first of all, just put upfront the issues that the discovery of this bridge. Raised, and it it it, the first one is is shown here. It was constructed in the woods without review or approval by either the mayor, the town council, or a recognized committee. There are some photos down below showing the bridge, two photos showing the stream bed before, without the bridge and with the bridge. Um, and the other issue, um, which was absolutely an opinion of. Um, some pe- people with some um, some experience with. Constructions around town and by others who just um were were more more concerned about safety under certain conditions. That the bridge was well constructed, but it appeared to be inadequately designed. As a bridge per se, but for safe public use or for longevity, and by public use, I mean. All into, most individuals, most of the time. Alright, so without, there is a chronology down here, um, which explains exactly how I. My understanding of exactly what transpired. Um, and a lot of that was aired in public already, but uh I. Believe I've captured the essential sequence of events that basically um, that basically. Um, support what I asserted there about about the approvals, review and process. So I wanna go straight to what the solutions to these problems. We ought, we ought, we ought to go to move forward, but I didn't mention, of course, was the bridge was built as a Boy Scout project. Um, by Eagle Scout Project, um, which um, we we've had those done elsewhere in town. Um, it's a certainly um, you know, a terrific opportunity if the Boy Scouts are interested in helping the town out. Town is more than, more, more than willing to help uh any Boy Scout. Uh, troop or 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 Eagle Scout to um, you know, may may um accomplish their. Their projects, um, and to that end, um. This is very disturbing for many of us. The proposed solution for the bridge with respect to um, with respect to to what is a. Inadequate safety issues under. Under. More more uh under conditions which we would expect to happen uh in the woods. Um, basically, I've listed here, and I'm not gonna go through it, some things that would be, that the bridge would be readily um. Able to be modified to um include. Um, the bridge was removed, uh, it was constructed so well that it was with screws and. Could easily be taken apart without damaging anything at all, so it could be put back without damaging anything. damaging anything at all. And it could be put back with a few, um, um, modifications as, as decided by the, by, um, by the town. All right, um, the other, the, the other solution, though, is avoiding future issues with, uh, his work on town property. So unfortunately, um, and we have, um, we have the Voice Scout Troy.
Yes, Brooks.
Brooks, sorry. Brooks, he here, and he has a statement he'd like to make. Um, because he, uh, believes he's going to be, he's potentially impacted by what's going on here. Um, but that respect to the towns' issues, um, I'm going to make three proposals. It's later on in the agenda. More heavily publicize the established town policies, which were published in the bulletin. Two bulletins, three bulletins? Um, as to the, uh, to guide residents in volunteering to assist with in-town projects. And, um, to reconsider, have the council reconsider, back in two thousand twenty-two, um, Barbara and I, Barbara proposed that the council pass a resolution sort of encoding this policy that, of approvals. Um, the council declined to do that and, uh, instead, um, authorized me to put it in the bulletin and to basically apply the principle. And so they, they can reconsider making it a resolution. And lastly, uh, and this, uh, uh, this was, came about in discussions with Tom Land himself. Um, to, um, create for town councillors a guidance document for being a liaison to a committee um, as to what the duties of the liaison, what the expectations were. Um, and, um, one of those, uh, one of those would be to bring to the council or the mayor um, or encourage anyone who is, has a project or has an idea who isn't getting traction on it to come to the council or the mayor, which is, should have happened with this project. Right? And why it didn't is quite a mystery to me. Because in all the years I've been mayor, I don't think I have ever blocked anybody's, you know, enthusiastic idea for something that would benefit the town. On the contrary, I, I could see the role of mayors to facilitate everybody else's work. So I don't have to do any work. But no, the, the point is that, uh, I, I, that's what should have happened. For me, me, didn't have to be me, could have been the council. It didn't have to be the council, could have been one councillor. Says, look, I'm not having, I'm, I'm not happy with the, the fact that, in this case, that the Woods Committee is, you know, appears to be not moving quickly enough or whatever, and I'd like to get this thing rolling. How do I get this thing rolling? Okay, I'm not going to go through the rest. That's.
Well, I think though, I think that.
Uh, we're going to talk about this later in the agenda. I don't want, I don't want the council to talk about it here.
Okay.
I'm doing this mostly because I know a lot of, there's a lot of strong feelings expressed
Okay.
on the non-official public outlet, the listserv, and I, um, I felt it would be counterprotective for people to just express their concern, unhappiness, anger um, in, in public appearances here before the council. I, I wanted to convey that I, and I know the council, um, is very concerned about what happened, uh, and this business, and you can't make us more concerned. Um, frankly, if you read my one post, I'm mostly concerned that the whole matter was aired on the listserv in a way which was totally unhelpful. Was only guaranteed to cause controversy and not to address the problem. So that is lies at other people's, uh, feet. Once again, that, that, I, we're now going to move on down. We are now going to move on to personal appearances. Um, but we have at least, we have one personal appearance here. And, um, we'd like to have him introduce himself, um, and, uh, he has a statement to put up, so. Uh, let's see, you can be in the field of view if you come over here.
Yeah. Is all right, must add.
All right, go ahead.
If you stop screen sharing.
I will. Thank you. And I have a terrible habit to, uh, of not stopping screen sharing. But I'm right now, I'm zooming in here, so hold on. Thanks. Nope. Right now, it's out of the. There.
Okay, perfect.
And I should stop the screen sharing. Just have a time limit. All right. Okay, right?
Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Mayor and Town Council of Washington Grove. Hello, my name is Brooks Hogan, a life scout from troop fourteen fifty in Rockford, Maryland. This past Thursday, I was made aware of the removal of the Poplar Trail Footbridge that I had constructed for my Eagle Scout project. I would like to provide some additional information surrounding the construction of the bridge. The main purpose of an Eagle project is to address and fix a problem that affects a large number of people. In this case, a washed-out gully along a footpath made it difficult for people to safely cross. The purpose of my project was to make a safer environment for everyone who enjoys their time in the West Woods. Over the course of seven months, I coordinated with Tom Land, my project beneficiary, William Vincent, my Eagle coach, and my troop scoutmaster to plan and construct a bridge along the Poplar Trail. I consulted with multiple engineers, including Herman Alb, a senior structural engineer with mature LLC. Mr. Alb has received a bachelor and master's degree in civil engineering, both from Tulane University. Additionally, he works closely with the city of New Orleans and its Parks Department, planning and designing structures for public use. Over the course of my planning, I discussed with Mr. Alb extensively the strength and safety of my drawings for the bridge. Here, he reviewed them and made certain that they were up to industry standards. After I had completed my design and schedule, I talked to Lawrence McNeese, my council's district eagle chair. My project fit the strict requirements for purpose and safety put forth by scouting, scouting America and was approved. At this point, I gathered all the materials, supplies and tools that would be needed. This included lumbers, fasteners, waterproof tape, drills, and more. I organized volunteers to help transport the supplies and brought in my fellow scouts to help with the construction of the bridge itself. The value of all the resources used to build the bridge exceeded one thousand dollars. The combined time of all those who helped with the building process was over thirty hours. The total time spent by others through the process was over twenty hours. The amount of time I personally spent on this project, planning, coordinating and leading, was over sixty hours. This project was the culmination of my time in scouts. I've been working toward the rank of eagle for over six years. In that time, I've gained six ranks, mentored dozens of scouts, and earned forty-two mayor badges. As an Eagle candidate, one of my final requirements is to complete an Eagle project. With the removal of the bridge, my chance at becoming an Eagle Scout has been jeopardized. Because of this situation, I'm unsure if I will probably qualify to become an Eagle. I understand that this whole issue surrounds a footbridge. This is not the largest issue in the world. Even so, I'm rather disappointed with how the situation has been handled and with the negative effects it has had on so many people. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, bro.
Okay, any other public appearances?
Yes.
Out there? Yeah.
Yeah, so I followed all this. And I was donated some of the materials. And, you know, I talked to Tom Land about it ahead of time, about a long time ago. And, uh, it seemed to me like this whole thing was like an overreaction. And I didn't, I don't know where it came from, is, you know, Eagle Scout is, you know, kind of has talked about, you know, consulted with structural report, I don't know, saw the photograph. And I understood the materials were used, and having done these guilty kind of things before myself, it seemed entirely sturdy enough for me. And I saw a comment about how this was could somehow be unsafe for someone who was unsteady on their feet. But then again, if you're that unsteady on your feet, how are you managing to make it down the trail? So I didn't get, I don't get why this was an issue. So I understand that someone could raise an issue, but it didn't seem how this made I didn't get how this made sense in, in a practical world as opposed to some arbitrary theory. So I, you know, so I, I don't, so I'll, so while Tom certainly should have talked with you or Peter ahead of time. And that's clearly the case. If we're me, I would certainly have talked to one of you. Um, that I have on other occasions, but uh, at the same time, you know, taking out the bridge seemed like a gross, terrible overreaction. Cause it wasn't, it didn't seem remotely unsafe to me. Having walked on lots of trails now in the past.
Okay, thanks, Dylan. Anyone else? All right, um, so then we'll move on in the a- agenda to the treasurer's report. Jean, are you still, uh?
I'm here.
Are you still with us?
Yes, I'm here.
So, um.
I, just in the interest of time, uh, as usual, I've put, um, comments I thought on items people might have questions on in the report itself, um, and I can answer any questions, but it's so soon into the fiscal year, I really don't have any, um, comments other than what are in the report there in the margins.
Okay, Barbara?
Uh, hi, Jean. Thanks for this report. Uh, I have a question under border identity improvements. The sediment area cleanup is at, at the end of Brown Street. Is that the one that you were talking about?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Anybody else? Okay, uh, I need a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
So moved.
Barbara?
Second.
Mary, a second, all in favor? Okay, that's accepted. Um. All right, we move on to the mayor's report. Um. Okay, well, well, first the kudos, uh, or maybe the brickbats, uh, first, which aren't even on here. Um, you've heard Bell, Bell Earl say that this was probably an overreaction. Um, and, and that's on me. Um, it, it does, I, I do want to point out that the, the bridge being removed, having been removed, it could readily be returned to its location, so they left. But, um, the, the, the reason I took this step, and I, at the time, barely knew Boy Scouts were involved, is because we've had a series of vigilante projects and actions. And I felt that this one being of some concern both from a safety point of view, um, and, I mean, from a process point of view, since as, if you will read it, um, the, the process of, of getting approval was started. Woods Committee was approached. The Woods Committee requested a plan to be presented to them. And at that point, nothing more was heard. Um, the Woods Committee requested that, uh, someone who knew something about building things and structural be consulted, maybe Steve could be consult, consulted. And apparently, um, that was never accomplished. So no one was consulted. The process was never finished, and yet the project was done. And, you know, at some point, that kind of stuff shouldn't happen at all. And, um, it, it looks like, um, Brooks, the Eagle Scout is getting caught in a, in a, a fortune situation, which I probably would have been made a huge effort to avoid. Um, had I appreciated all these details, but then how am I supposed to know all these details since nobody had talked to any of you? All right, so th- 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 this is the situation. So I'm going to throw a brickbat at myself for, um, for not counting to ten uh, before taking any action. All right, let's go on to the kudos.
Well, uh, uh, no, because you're, okay, so, so, um, that was, that was like one of the worst feelings I've had in a long time when they walked out of here, because I was hoping that, um, it would be part of a discussion we're going to have later, or maybe now about this, this. And I totally agree with everything you said. Um, the, the thing is that new, this, this was all new information to me, to hear that his project might be jeopardized. And the thing is that we as a town, I think, need to respond to that and support whoever, you know, if he needs evidence or whatever to support the fact that he did the work, he did his due diligence, he should not be penalized because of this snafu within our town.
I, I know you're saying what many people feel. I, I wish you could wait till we get to it on the.
Well, when's it? Well, you just brought that up, and I'd like.
No, I brought up my action.
Yeah.
Not anybody else, uh, you know, my.
Oh, okay.
I get threw a brickbat at myself.
Yeah.
With a, with unfortunately, a little bit of too much explanation.
Right.
All right, but you're, you, you've spoken for many of us, I'm sure.
Including yourself. I just wish that we had handled this differently with them not walking out. I think they decided we're going to have this conversation later, then we could have told them, which we would do for other people, that, oh, we're going to bring this up at a different point.
Be more interested in the outcome.
Okay, okay.
The discussion.
Okay, all right, sorry. Go on. Continue.
All right, let me go on to the kudos. Uh, obviously, to the rec committee organizers and all the many volunteers who pitched in to make the two thousand twenty-five Labor Day Weekend Games and Potluck a rousing success. And I go on to name a few, um, if anybody has been omitted, uh, I'm sorry about that. But Lisa Baylen, Rianay Malosnick, Christina Coe, Donna Schreiner, Meredith Horan, Linda Buell, Oscar Ramos, Peggy Kunis Boar, Bob Boer, Peggy Hillen, um, Arlene McCrea, Peter Nagrod, and Sarah Parent Ramos. Were, um, all named, um, by the rec committee people, Lisa Baylen.
You have to include, I'm sorry, but you have to include Tom Land in that also. For his support of the picnic. He really did a great job.
Okay. Um, I, I will add that in the minutes and. Okay, then, uh, my next kudo goes to Christine Dibble for the, her initiative and time and the skill to deliver the new town bulletin in HTML format. Um, it debuted, of course, last week for the September Bulletin. It already has received accolades, uh, from town residents. So, um, going forward, um, that, uh, that bulletin in that format is, um, is going to be, um, done by Christine, and everyone else knows we've um, so we've tightened up the submission uh, timing to hopefully not miss anything out because she needs a, a couple of days to turn the, the normal bulletin into this. Okay, and, um, last kudo is, uh, was, was suggested by, um, John Porter um, to the summer tree watering team of young people. Um, and I'm going to name them, but I, uh, I'm going to butcher the names. Um, Kevin Asawantagasatianasawan.
Kevin.
Watan. No, no, all his friends is Kevin A.
Kevin A.
Kevin A. Tomas, uh, Bernal Specter, Corey Hicks and Ted McCrea and, uh, with Ja- uh, Javit Kitan, uh, uh, helping out there for diligently watering the fifteen young trees planted in the east woods. Uh, and additional kudos go to Anna Specter and Deb Melherber, who helped out during summer vacation when, when those individuals went um, away. All right, so the next item on my, um, report, Washington Grove Connector Shared Use Pathway. Well, the sixty-five percent plans have been received. Well, the sixty-five percent plans have been received by the Department of Transportation. Broke from their engineering consultant, they were just received and we have yet to see them, but we will. Meanwhile, the mandatory deferral is, as I reported last month. Is been scheduled for September twenty-fifth. When the thirty-five percent engineering plans will be. Will be reviewed by the planning board, presented and, and reviewed. So anyone who wants to tune in, those are live. On Zoom. I think the town will probably send a statement in support. We don't expect any issues whatsoever. And as a consequence, the, the funding for construction is in this year's budget. And there is some. Chance that this construction will actually get started before the end of the fiscal year. The next gym. You know, with governments, these three things, can't, you can't, don't, don't bet the fortune on that. The stunt part in Woodward Park, just to report, me hand. I think with a perched hummingbird, I thought. Or is it an owl? Maybe someone knows. As imagined by Colin, Colin Vale, it continues to be emerged out of the wood. Testimony on the EPA's proposal to abandon the endangerment ruling. You can see in the materials. A draft of testimony that some interested and energetic and knowledgeable people. Involved in the Sustainability Committee and maybe others have been putting together. Who are, feel quite strongly, as do I and perhaps all of you. That the attempt by the administration to overturn this endangerment finding. Is a huge threat to ability to deal with, with. Climate change, greenhouse gas pollutants and the like. So you can read there's that, that draft testimony comments that are in the materials. I'd also like, and it's not on the agenda, I knew I would forget something. I'd also like the council to. Approve signing that when it's ready, me signing it on behalf of the town. Because the deadline for submission is September twenty-second. Has it been extended, the deadline for?
Well, it was, it was extended from the fifteenth to twenty-second.
Yeah, so it's gonna have to happen in the next two weeks.
There is a motion on the agenda.
It is on there?
Uh huh, it is.
I remember. I'm forgetting what's going on. Thank you, Mary. Next update is the swim contract, we are still drafting that with SMI, so nothing much to report. I will say that our, our town attorney has. Suggested or. Informed me that most contracts of this sort have a. Have a performance bond attached to them. Now, a performance bond is, is a insurance. Against the general contractor paying off. The subs for materials. Should they abandon the project? They choose to abandon the, the, the project, or they say, or go bankrupt and can no longer. And so you, you obtain this performance bond. Unfortunately, and this came up when we were negotiating a contract and discussing the contract. The unfortunate part about it is that it is about two percent of the value of the contract. Which isn't that much, but in the case of our contract will cost around ten thousand dollars and that's outside the contract to pass through. We would be paying for it because it's our insurance. That this sort of. Event not, not happen, so we may put that in there, in which case. In which case we will be. Putting the bill for that particular insurance. Okay. Next item, the loss of the two historic streetlights I reported last month, Pepco, the lighting committee and I met with Pepco officials. They, they were apologetic, but that didn't get us back our old streetlights. But they did agree and they have replaced the streetlights that they had installed, which were not appropriate, too bright. With. Still newer. Streetlight fixtures, but with the lower, the lower wattage and. Whether or not that provides sufficient light is under discussion because of neighbors preferences. But suffice to say, the over bright lights are not. Bacon Properties Registry. That situation, the five properties that were identified as. As at least over the last months. Prior to the registry being, being. In a, in a state that would require them to register. Of those. One of them has registered, the. The long house has met all the requirements. Two of them, three of them are for sale, which is a pass. To me, that the sale goes through. And one of them, which one was I thinking?
Yolanda.
Sorry?
Yolanda. Yolanda.
Oh, and one of them where we may, where, where I've, I've issued a, a notice of non-compliance. And hopefully we won't have to start finding. Her, but. That situation is still. So that, that's the state of.
And, and one got an extension because potentially going to put the house for sale, you giving her an extension?
Yeah, we have, well, that, yes.
Is that the one that's next to Susan? Oh, it is, yeah, it's one of them.
All right, next item, the Town of Washington Grove Fall Festival, which we hashed out over the last few months is. Already to take place on the, on the twentieth. With twenty-five or maybe twenty-six or.
Twenty-six, I just know.
Exhibitors and some food trucks and hopefully all of you who are here will. Get a chance to stop by.
Oh, hold it, okay, so we talked about this as far as stipulations and, and you scared the heck out of Rec Committee. And so they put together the, the parking plan and the site plan. Is there?
I just have to approve it, right?
Well, we never really talked about how that works, to tell you the truth, because we never received.
That's how it works.
We never received a direct request from the council or from the mayor as far as what you were looking for and. All right, I mean, I'm just, I'm not, I'm not criticizing at all, I'm just curious as far as the process, as far as.
I'll read the parking plan.
Well, but so Lisa can sleep, and so Renee can sleep tonight, we are all, we are good to go, right? And I said it to everybody.
Unfortunately, didn't have a chance to, you just said it to me, so.
Because those twenty-six vendors have to be like.
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
I'm sure if there's anything wrong with it, it's a tweak.
Okay, because, and nobody responded.
The fact, the fact that, that it's been thought about and, and, and worked on, that's all we really wanted.
Yeah, and it's perfect, by the way.
So that's good. Yeah, so really, really, the whole point was that it was part of the.
It was good, yeah, yeah, yeah. And the weather, we also have a plan for, which is.
The weather?
Yeah, we, 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 we made sure that's gonna be perfect too, so, we're good, okay, thank you.
I'm not gonna sign off on the weather. All right, so lastly, the Town of Volunteers event, which the council. My consensus agreed was, would be a good event for promoting volunteerism and for. For recognizing volunteers. We've, has, has, planning has started and. The tentative date at present is October fourth. And scheduled in the late afternoon or early evening, there's some discussion of whether it should be a potluck dinner, a potluck appetizer. Or. Outright happy hour. So, you know, I asked him, what would, what would be the, the most. Would attract the, the most attendance, I will remind everyone, the idea here is. Not to have it be a meeting of all of you who are big volunteers already. Although we need a bunch of you there in support of the whole idea that everyone in, in town. No matter how much or little time they have, and probably find something to involve themselves in. And I were trying to, trying to attract. Those who, for all sorts of reasons, aren't, or don't feel like participate, haven't been able to participate. That said, the idea is that, that we, we want everyone to talk to their neighbors. And say, look, we're having this thing, it's a chance to learn about what, where, where the volunteer opportunities are. Talk to, talk to anyone you wanna talk to, drop in, eat or drink something and, you know. This is something you, you, you really should make time to attend, and you can attend for half an hour, for an hour and a half, or hours or longer it goes. So, but, but the deal is to talk to your neighbors, because that's who we would really like to. Be exposed to this. Right?
Right, talk to your neighbors, but each of us as Town Council Liaisons should also be talking to our committees. And, and letting them know that they'll be expected to be there, or if, you know, if they can. And talk about what they do as a committee and get their committee members to talk to their. Neighbors and, and spread it all out like that, so it's, everybody's talking to everybody and inviting people in. So we're all kind of responsible for pulling in people.
And that's the end of my report. Okay, on to the agenda. The first item is, well, the administrative matters, and the first, first one. Is in response again to public letters, mostly. As to what's going on in Woodward Park, and I asked Georgette to give us an update. On removal, on, on, on the, the very, if you look, very obvious change near the backstop there. So, Georgette, you are. You have the four.
Okay, can you hear me all right?
Yep.
Okay. Most of the time that I've lived in Washington Grove, that area between Pine Avenue and Pine Road behind the backstop. Has looked like a nice, natural, little forested area. And our problem is that in the last few years, we've lost. Several large trees in there, and at least one of the really big trees that came down took out a bunch of smaller trees. So basically, we now have a wooded area that seems to be largely populated by bush honeysuckle. And with far fewer trees than anybody on forestry and beautification could remember ever having been there before. So we decided that we would make that the focus of our fall planting event this year. So basically, we got RJ to clear out bush honeysuckle. And remove woody debris that would keep us from getting in and planting new trees. There has been some mention of how we removed a bunch of leaf litter. And I'd like you to think about how one removes leaf litter. Leaf litter, I mean, what are you gonna do? Come in with leaf blowers and blow it all back out of the park? What actually happened was the leaf litter that is in there was functioning as a weed suppressant. And things don't grow well through it. But if you take that leaf litter and you mix it up with the soil that's underneath. You enrich the soil with the organic material and you actually get. Soil that is even more capable of supporting tree growth than it was previously. So that was what happened. One of the. Small earth moving. Pieces of equipment that the town uses came in and regraded the area. Mixing the leaf litter into the underlying soil. So if you say you can't see the leaf litter, that's because it's mixed in with the soil. We have new soil, which is actually freshly able to support plant growth. And it also gives us a really nice area to plant our new trees. And makes it a little easier to get in to water them for the first year or so. Now, some new leaves will come in in the fall, but hopefully they will not suppress the growth of. Small seedlings immediately, because we're hoping that the seeds that are already there will start coming up. From the trees that were previously there. What we really want is to have a healthy forest succession in this area. And we're putting in a certain number of larger trees and trying to encourage smaller ones to grow up around them. Okay. The F and B volunteers, and this year that was Audrey Masquerade, Deb Melferber, and Cynthia Wirths. Went to Stadler this past Friday and purchased ten trees and four shrubs. Those will all be installed probably toward the end of September or early in October. We have a mixture of upper canopy trees like black gum, pin oak, red oak, tulip poplar, sweet gum, maple, and American beech. If all goes well, we plan to add some understory trees in the spring, the smaller, pretty trees that'll have flowers. Like dogwood or red bud. So I think that over time, this area is going to return to being an attractive, natural wooded. Patch like it was when I think about it about five years ago. And that's important for the Woodward Park Project for F and B this year. Thank you.
Can I add something? Yeah, so, so I'm, I'm the Town Council Liaison for F and B, and I wanna talk about how much I love being the Town Council Liaison. It's amazing the level of knowledge that Georgette and Audrey and Jay Everhart and other people on that committee have. The diligence with, you know, walking around town and figuring out, okay, where do we need to put trees? Stadler comes out, they check the trees and, you know, make sure, you know, if they're not no good, they send them back. They keep an eye on the tree as, you know, time goes on and it's growing, making sure it's watered, making sure it's healthy. There are people that they can call on if they suspect a tree has a disease. And, you know, this is just an ongoing process of, of really watching what's happening with those trees and making sure everything stays healthy. So, you know, I know we all love our trees here, we walk around and probably before I was the liaison. I really did not know the level of meticulousness and care and energy that went into this. And so I just wanted to make sure that everybody here tonight, you know, understands that, and I'm sure a lot of people do already, but just to reiterate that. So I think it's, it's really important to recognize that.
And actually, I, I truly appreciate that, and it reminds me to say, we would love to have new volunteers. We would be very excited by that, and if you love trees, please just come and talk to us, you don't have to know that much. It's a lot of fun learning about them. Keep it in mind.
Anyone else have any questions for Georgette? Okay, thanks, Georgia, thank you so much. All right, this brings us to. The agenda item, which I've called managing projects on town property and encouraging initiative in our town of volunteers. So there, there's an A and a B here, and I, I put the. The, the, the first part is this. Whole contract temps with the bridge in the West Woods. Is really a case study of what not to do. Now not to. Use your volunteer time on, on a town project. Without, you know, informing, informing, having reviewed. And having approved by somebody who has responsibility. and having approved by somebody who has responsibility with respect to town land. All right, and I'm not going to go through the case study, but, but it's the impetus for coming, coming to this because um, you know, no, yeah, to the extent we can, we want to make sure all, everyone in the town knows that if they want to volunteer, it's not a hard process. Most people manage it very well. Um, but exactly what do you do if you, if you see uh something that needs to be repaired? Or, you know, we need a new sign, or, you know, so many different things. Um, so the the fact is that we, we, we had this, the council, town council in uh, in two thousand twenty-two um addressed the, the, and you know, how to um, how to um publicize the policy of um, of who to go to when you have a project, or you have some volun- uh interest in volunteering for even an ongoing project, but uh, or a new one. And those were published in the bulletin. Um, I can put uh up, for example, the more uh, the um, sorry, um, the more, most extensive one um was in uh December of twenty-two, but and I, it should have been, clearly, one can easily say, hey, we should see it again, that's a while ago. Um, and that would be correct, but it's here and it's in the materials, and you can see it, I put the bulletin articles, I uh put a few other things uh associated with these uh, this information, but here, here's the, here, here, here it is um outside, and not in the bulletin, I could show the bulletin, but you can see it yourself. You can get these also on the, on the web. Uh, and this one simply um pointed everybody to the various and sundry committees who had various responsibilities, as well as the uh um uh anyone who was a liaison for, for different areas. And it says, and I have it here highlighted, if the contact can't be reached, the town clerk or the mayor may be contacted. So that was that one, the um, there was another one uh which was um more succinct, did not go into all of the committees, uh but did basically say the same thing, we encourage everybody who wants to do stuff. Um, if you have an idea for the project, you can go see a committee, or if not, please contact first the maintenance coordinator, Peter, then Kathy, and then me. So, you know, hope, to the extent anybody reads these things. And we've had that issue going on. Uh, you know, it's been, it was out there, and it, after this, it will be out there again in, in the bulletin. So um that's a proposal, that's my proposal, the first thing to do. The, the, the next thing to do, um, what was the next thing to do? I have it here somewhere. Can't keep track of my hand and stuff. Up that chair, then where I have this. Oh, come on. Sorry. Right, okay, yeah, so um, a, a, as I, I've mentioned before in this meeting, the council did entertain a resolution in um in two thousand twenty-two, and for reasons which I, once again, I don't recall, declined to go ahead with it, and, and I'm, I'm gonna propose to the council that we reconsider it, not tonight, but uh at a future meeting, uh to make it a sort of an official council policy, which kind of backs up what I just showed you, which was uh this statement of the actual operating uh policy of going, of, 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 of offering your time and um bringing it to the appropriate uh, the appropriate person um who, who can, who can make it happen. And then the, the third thing uh with respect to this, and I'm sure there are others, and when I stop, I'm gonna offer, I can offer all your suggestions. But the, the third one was, as I mentioned, um to involve the, the committee liaisons a little more completely. Um, um, and the format might, might take would be, because it's needed, John, John Porter joined the council, and you know, a number of times he asked me, well, what's my responsibility, he says, on liaison? So I, yeah, I said, well, this, 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 and this, well, you know, I didn't, it's hard to remember everything that a liaison does. So it would be very, and we don't get a new council member all that often. So uh it would be helpful to have guidelines for council liaisons. So I, I've got a document and um credit where credit is due, Tom Land did the first draft, and it was, it was, it was almost spot on, I've made, made a few changes, but uh, but uh I think that uh uh would be helpful, and, and why is because one of those things would be to um at, on the committees, if someone appears to be unhappy with the way things are going, especially, especially if they have been volunteering time, or they want to do a project, that the liaison can go to that individual and say, look, you, you can, you know, you want me to take this to the council, can you want to go to the council? You want to go to the mayor, who, you know, you, you can, you, you have an alternative. No guarantees that will change anything, but it will certainly provide an additional, you know, an additional opportunity to um, you know, air your, your opinion as to, as to how to, you know, what should be done and what, what you might want to do. So that, that would be the one important part, uh in addition to the other things we all know about liaisons, providing town council reports, voila. So I have that document, I didn't want to put it on here because we've, we've got plenty to do, but to worry about that. But I do think we ought to um um in addition to publishing these, these, these policies in the bulletin, um reconsider the, a, a resolution and um this liaison document. Um, and if, okay, so I'm done. I, you know, I, I, I'm at a little bit of a loss as to what more to do, um, but I'm sure there
There was something Christine wrote to council um about, on her idea, which I didn't quite understand. Um, but I talked to her about it, and I think it's the, it's the beginning of a good idea in terms of people request something or want something to get done, and so they'll go to somebody, and it kind of gets lost and not followed up, and she's, she says she's working on a password, password protected section of the website, which the first thing in there is going to be reservations for the courts. But her idea would be to put in a section where people, I, I, this may or may not help you, I think it might be helpful because probably most of them will be names, but where people can put a request or say that they need something, and then it would be assigned either to a particular person or someone that they would know that they would need to contact, and, and then there would be a record of it, so um, you know, she's just throwing that out there, but it sounds to me like
Yeah.
a good beginning of an idea to organize.
Yes.
So are we discussing something without emotion, or so? I just couldn't I was just I was just bringing it up as related to
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
This.
We can cut this off anytime, we can, we can
So we're not gonna decide anything today about this?
No, I, I, as I said, the, 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 moving forward actions are putting the policies in bulletin. Okay, considering a resolution that potifies, or that, you know, the, the, the council's policy for volunteers. And the third one would be to um, to consider a policy for, I mean, a guidelines for liaison. That's for, and those would all involve motions. Okay, if you don't want to pursue
So will they be on the agenda for next month then?
If somebody is, yes, we can, I can put as many of them will fit on the agenda, that's two of them only. Right? Uh, we can bring back, you, you want to, if you don't have the copy of the proposed resolution, I'll provide it with
Oh, no, I haven't.
Yeah. See, see if that still works. And once again, I say, I've forgotten why the council didn't want to go forward. But maybe it's in the minutes, and I didn't read the minutes.
Robert knows.
Okay, um. Is that, okay, I mean, uh Okay, so now we come to item ten, the proposal to reinstall a modified bridge in, in, let me, let me get in, in, on the poplar trail. So we've heard about the consequences of those of removal, the apparent rejection of Brooks' Eagle Scout project bridge. Okay, um, that, I did not intend it to be that. Uh, because I, I'm, I'm not kidding, we could put it back tomorrow. Pretty much exactly the way it was, and that would constitute the project, you know, the fruits of the project working out, okay. I can't help him out with the fact that uh, the only way to say it is he was misled badly um by his advisor, which was Tom Land, and possibly by other advisors who didn't recognize, and if you're doing something in the town of Washington Grove, you might want to be sure you're talking to Washington Grove's, the town of um, in, in terms of, in terms of getting permits and permission, and Patty looked at the requirements, and sure enough, that's one of the requirements, is if you're doing a project, you want to be sure you have this is a permission and, or permits, or whatever's required to do the project. So, and that's, and, 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 you know, looked at strictly, he didn't have that. But looked at it more objectively, he didn't have that because he thought he was talking to someone who could provide him with that permission. All right, so.
I don't understand that, that sentence, because he, somebody who could, but it's, that's irrelevant, he didn't get it.
But he assumed
How does he know?
What's that?
He didn't get it.
Yeah, he was working with someone from town who was speaking with authorities, so he, you know, why, how much investigation does he need to do
Yeah, to
figure out
I didn't know that there was somebody, I hope it's not, that's, that's not me.
What?
Because my name keeps getting mentioned, which is really annoying, okay?
You're very proliferate, you're not involved at all.
It's his perception of whether he had permission, he was work in town, he was working with somebody
Okay, no, okay, I didn't know, I did not know that, thank you for sharing that. Yeah.
Well, Bill was dying material, and you heard Ryan Young suggested that this, he would be good for this project, it was sort of a joint thing, and, but neither Tom nor Ryan appreciated the fact that, you know, they could, they, they couldn't really speak for the town.
Right. Well, no, they
So moving forward with the motion to reinstall the bridge?
Yes, so it was gonna, yes, as for a motion
Yeah, I have a motion. If that's where we want to go right now?
Yep.
Okay.
Will that satisfy his requirements, do you think?
That's for discussion after we have a motion.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm not sure it will. I, I just don't know. So the, the motion is uh a move, I moved to reinstall the Boy Scout bridge, as suggested by the mayor. Modified for safer public use, you still want to keep that language in there, or just put it back up as
It's a motion, we can
Okay, the motion is to, to put it in with improvements, as the mayor laid out with substituting the flanking, adding more railing, adding a third two by six to support the bridge, because it was questions whether it was strong enough, as was. Lengthening both ends to add more support on either ends, onto the footers, and stabilizing support supporting stream bed banks with stone, et cetera.
Rip, rip.
Rip, rip, yeah.
Is, is that written down somewhere?
Yes, we had it written, don't worry.
Yes, it's written down, I mean, my presentation maybe wasn't the best. So that's the motion.
Do we have a second?
No, second.
Second.
All right, open to discussion.
My question would be, before we do all this, to, I mean, I'm assuming that we're doing this to try to help him so he can get his, his, at least that's part of it, um, credit for sixty hours of work that he's kind of been stuck in the middle of, and for him not to get his Eagle Scout badge after all that is just, when it's not his fault, is just heartbreaking.
I think a letter from the town would be great to his advisor, or to the Boy Scouts in general, stating that that he was misled in terms of what requirements, you know, who, who was speaking for the town, and maybe that would help him out. Because he obviously felt like he had done his due diligence.
Sounds like he did.
Doesn't, doesn't seem like it would make sense to have, to become a little bit more aware of what would be required for him to get his, there, that if I have a dis- discussion, he says, we, you know, let's get more information about what we can do to get him there, because we don't really know what that is.
No. So, all right, I think what you really
But not really
I heard you said, but what you were, were implying is we should talk to the Boy Scouts as to what we can, you know, what's the story in this situation, what, what is possible here?
The Scoutmaster would be a great place to start.
Right, right.
Because, you know, I think we all agree, it, it, you know, it's, it's, this isn't about um books and this, you know, his effort and his project. And yes, you know, for government officials, you can, you can say, you know, you didn't follow, you know, you, you have, you have to be more diligent about these things, because you, you, now you see how easy you can run into trouble. Well, most of us don't learn that until it happens to us, or it happens to our colleague, and we go, oh my God, you know, I might have, I might have done the same thing they did, and they got into trouble. So, you know, it's, and he's a young guy, and so it's hard to, um, it's hard to point the finger and, and make him, make the fall. I think this res- this motion is, is, it's about that, but it, it's also about the bridge itself, so um, but, but the fact is, for that trail to be safe, we need a bridge. Uh, the situation is just um unsafe to go down into the stream bed and back up. And, you know, there may be five ways to, to solve that, but a bridge is certainly a perfectly good way to do it, and this bridge was there, and, you know, as, as Bill and Ryan and the structural engineer, this guy that Brooks talked to, this is a perfectly solid bridge that, to, to, to do this crossing. And so one could just put this bridge back up and say, you know, it's safe enough. You know, and, right, probably nothing will happen, and frankly, if it had been a one-foot crossing, one-foot wetlands, then the safety would have been, uh, uh, you know, I'm not a big person about doing things just for safety, but unfortunately, it's, it's, at, at the height, it's three feet. So a fall there is, you know, is serious thing. One foot, you know, not so serious. So in this case, the bridge, I think, I don't know who he was talking to, structural engineer was, maybe the bridge's structure is good enough, but a safe, I think a safety engineer would say, no, that it doesn't um meet what the requirements. Uh, and, and those probably are two different things. And so the, the objection to the bridge is based on that from, to the extent we know anything at all, so, but anybody's welcome to have their opinion on that, you know, it may or may not be worth modifying this bridge to, you know, it's all a matter of how. Okay, I've said, said, said a lot here, um. How, how to proceed, I think Peter's made an excellent suggestion to find out, you know, we now know it potentially impacts those efforts and To find out, you know, we now know it potentially impacts those efforts and, and Eagle. Scout project, uh, we believe it through none of his own doing and maybe he, you know. You know, he, he couldn't have expected him to, you know, be more diligent on this, so how can we fix this?
Hey, hi, this is Bruce Christ, um, can you all hear me?
Yeah.
No.
Hi, is it?
I can't usually let you comment.
No, no.
Yeah, sorry Bruce, but write us a letter.
Okay.
Or call, or just call up whoever you feel will, you know.
Well, I just thought it'd be good to engage the scout as well as the scout masters and maybe have the scout do the labor for us.
Oh yeah, now when we get to that, yeah, that's a, yes, you mean when the workers.
Yeah, I'm engaged, and, and so, you know, have this a.
The, uh, what we wanna do is have the current. Bridge reviewed by a safety engineer, like a certified whoever, whatever the certification is. Because there's a lot of different opinions about whether it's safe or whether it's not safe. So I think that's the first thing. Second, as far as this motion goes, there's a lot of detail in it. And as an un-engineer myself, I don't know if that's the right. Length or rocks here or, I really don't know, so I don't feel like I need to have that in the motion. Uh, cause like I can't say, yes, that's, it has to be done. And then third. I think that we need to, uh, once we do those, have John reach out. To the scout, to the master, whoever the appropriate people are, to try to resolve whatever those. Uh, existing problems are for him to get his badge. So, so, safety engineer review the current plan, and if it's, if it's not safe. To, to, to. Make recommendations on to, as to how to make it safe, to. Take out all those details and then three, work with the scout to get, make sure he gets his credit.
I second that amendment, that's very sensible.
Thank you, Rob.
Rebuild it as it was and then have it evaluated for safety or just look at. Look at the photographs and look, you know, without rebuilding it because.
Put it like cheap and rebuild it and he can get his badge and then we could evaluate it.
Well. If it's not safe, then we shouldn't have an unsafe bridge built on public town land. But we don't know, I mean, and that's part of the problem of how we got here.
Yes.
Well, are the bridges in the east, uh, in the east woods, are we gonna do the same thing for those? It's the same bridge as the east woods, it's like pretty much.
Let's just look at this.
Yeah, but now, once, once it's brought up, liability is. You know, it's, I'm not a lawyer, but I don't like.
But it, to, to, I mean, to be honest, and we talked about this on Saturday, uh, Peter, when we're walking through the woods. There are a lot of places, and you pointed out some, that are, seem worse and are, are in more. A bridge. So, um, it might be something that's worthwhile for the town to consider more broadly, building of, um, your footpath bridges. Throughout the woods, uh, in, in all the various locations where there are gullies. That are hard to pass, um, and I'm all for that, I think that would be, but, but let's get a good design and then replicate that. If we get a, a, uh, an evaluation or report of, of the kind that, that Barbara suggests. And it comes back and says, actually, this design has some problems and needs to be fixed, maybe the way that, that John Porter's motion described it. Or, or something else, then, you know, okay, we can then come up with a model, replicate it throughout the town. Uh, i- i- woods as, as needed. And I totally agree with the idea that we should. Do whatever we can to help the, the, um, Brooks out. I mean, he, he obviously was. A, a victim here, but our, our overriding obligation obviously has to be to make sure that we're doing what's. Best and in the interest of the town. And if, if that ultimately means we can't help him as much as we would. That will really stink, but, you know. And, and I hope it's not that, and we should try and do everything we can to get it, the situation that, that helps him, but. Um, but, you know, ultimately, if we can't rebuild the bridge as, as it was built originally, then. You know, it's, it's just, it is what it is.
So. I think, I think we're. We're approaching it kinda like in a shotgun approach, you know, we're going from one. Project, one bridge to now looking at the entire structure of the town facility.
But I'm sorry Chris, but I need a motion to amend John's motion and Rob seconded. Okay, I heard, okay, or if that's what we're talking about, okay.
So. And I think, yeah, I think that's fine.
So let's repeat. What the proposed amendment to the motion is, as I heard it, it was to strip the specific. But the question of safety is just a question of safety. The, what was the other part, the?
Safety engineer review.
The safety engineer.
To review the plans.
To review the plan, um, and lastly, to see if, you know, the, the Boy Scouts were in there somewhere.
Yeah, that, that you would work with the Boy Scout or the troop or whoever to make. If at all possible, make sure he gets his Eagle Badge.
So we'd have to contact Brooke to begin with to get his original plans that he had approved. We don't have those plans anywhere.
Right.
We could draw new ones based on how it was built.
That would be.
We would need to get his original plans that he said were approved by an engineer.
Yeah, I'm sure he has. Yes, I know.
Yeah, so.
I guess, I, I guess my thing is just trying to focus on the bridge, right?
Right, well, that's what this is about. Rob made some statements about. Other.
I, I wasn't intending that to modify the amendment. Yeah, I just was making the observation because it was in response to something Peter had brought up that like, well, we have other bridges, what about those? And it, it may be after we deal with this immediate episode that we decide more broadly. To address all the problems with gullies and, and throughout the woods on the walking paths by building a safe walking path bridge. You know, in, in all the various different places, coming up with a, a model that makes sense and then. Trying to replicate that, but that's for a later day, I'm, I'm not suggesting we do that right away.
Okay, well, in my opinion, Barbara amended, you know, sort of more, you know. Action. Items, um, ma- makes sense, I'm. I, I do have a comment and I'm certainly gonna find structural engineer, probably, we'll just take a look at it. I have a general comment though about safety, um, you know, sa- safety is, is, is a huge. As, as a huge spectrum of, um. Of facets, I mean, you, you have to first decide, uh, you know. Who you, if you're trying to make something safe, you're trying to make something safe, from what? For whom? And the answer to that affects what your analysis will be. You know, alright, so I'll give you an example, so supposing I, supposing I'm taking a hike in a national park. And there are some trails through the national park, and the national park actually takes care of those trails, but. As any of you have done those, those sorts of heights. They may or may not be in good shape, depending on when they were last repaired. So when you go walking in a national park, it's at your own risk. Unless somebody has bungled completely, you know, some sort of a structure. You're walking on trails, you're walking, uh, along stream beds, you're crossing small stream beds on. Little plank, light things, that's at your own risk. You, I, you know, I, I know of no one who would hold. The Park Service responsible for not maintaining this trail in a way so that I wouldn't slip off of it. I'm absolutely one hundred percent certain about that. So I'm just giving you an example, you know, but if your trail is supposed to be for all residents. Who are willing to. Engage on the trail. Um, and they, that, you know, the trail, we're not making the trail a sidewalk or a piece of cake, there are places you can trip over things. You have to go up and down, alright, then we, we are applying a certain level of, of, of safety, um. Uh, planning to that and to, you know, for Peter to say there are other areas where you have to cross stream beds and whatever. That's absolutely true, and you, walking those at your own risk. The difference is, in this case, just throwing this out, because difference is you're not crossing three feet over. A gully. You know, you're walking down a bank on loose stones, you might twist your ankle, you might slip and fall. People have done that, um, you know, you have to go over a fallen log, whatever. But this is a, an attempt to continue the trail over this, what I would consider fairly dangerous. Gap. So, uh, the only reason I'm applying any, any higher level of safety here, I'm talking to Rob. Um, is because the bridge is, there is a bridge, and, and does the bridge. Meet the requirements that I, I would think for this bridge. I've said to many people, if the bridge was only four feet or five feet long, two steps. You know, I wouldn't be any half as concerned, but if it's six or eight steps. Alright, now you're talking about, you know, you have to walk across it, there's more opportunity to screw up, so I'm just, I'm, I'm addressing the what is safe. Idea, so there's structural safety, the bridge won't collapse. It's structurally sound. Then there's, can, can somebody injure themselves by using the bridge?
Maybe, maybe that's the distinction that will get him out because if his bridge itself was structurally safe, then he met the requirements.
I mean, I think the, and everybody who saw it and everybody who saw it, it was, was built very structurally safe. Today, I don't know about two years from now, but that's true with half of the stuff we have around.
Any American Legion or any.
Apparently, yeah.
I'll be thinking about that.
I'm not driving to bridge any.
Uh, uh, anyway, um, so I, I, I'm willing to, I, I think. Having a structural engineer give some sort of official premature on the bridge, on the bridge, although he assured me that they had somebody give that opinion. I have no problem accepting that, but I will not, I, I don't accept the fact that it was. In, in terms of safety features of the bridge.
Functionality.
Yes, but it met requirements that we, what we would want for this particular bridge, not the little bridge in the east woods or any of that. Anyway, that's the distinction that, you know, and I absolutely agree, we're dealing with one bridge, one incident. Not at the spectrum of bridges.
It's blonde, so somebody, um, a resident also had a suggestion, which is interesting. Is that we are, we are putting two bridges. Um, as part of the master plan for the playground, over that little, little gully for the kids to run across. And, um, that person's suggestion was, why don't we reinstall that bridge there? It would be, it would be totally safe. It's basically, we were talking about putting something similar to that there. And they, I mean, that's just, I must, that was just suggested, and this is somebody who represents, is on the. You know, playground committee, so it's not like we're gonna have a big fight with them, it was just, this might be something of interest to them.
I wouldn't think this bridge was. Appropriate for that.
It's, it's only three feet, how, how wide is this bridge? You're talking about, because the point that we're talking about is over ten feet long.
Yeah, this, this, this is just in the playground. So it's, it's a lake bait.
It's not, yeah, it won't fit over that.
It'd be like five.
It's only three feet, this is a ten foot, the, the.
I'm talking about putting that, yeah, repurposing that in the playground area, that's what I'm saying. That's what they were suggesting.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, it would be the same, it would be repurposed, it would have the same, you know, it, it would achieve what his goal is, it would be safe. Because there's no, you know, butt drop there, that's all.
So, so let me ask you this on the back to your motion, right, motion is a safety review. And then the next thing is to go to the Boy Scouts, I guess, isn't it, to, to see if we wanna. Figure out how to.
Right, so it would be a safety review to determine whether a safety engineer thinks the current bridge. As it was designed. Structurally safe. Uh, safe for use. Function, yeah, thank you. Uh, and then if not, what suggestions would be made? To bring it up to safety standards and, and reinstall.
Uh, so along those lines, so I guess, you know, if, if it were me, right, uh, looking at this. If we went back and said that it wasn't functionally safe, then the due diligence that the Boy Scouts. Would be expecting would be jeopardy.
Yeah, yeah.
You're, 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 you're basically ripping his Eagle Scout away from.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
And I think that he did, he built a structural, I mean, his structure, he used it, can we look at what his engineer did and see if that. Would meet requirements for his project, not this specific bridge over this gully, but building a bridge. That is, you know, structurally sound and engineered correctly, I mean, that's what he's being judged on. And he's just had all these other, you know, situations imposed on top of it, but if we could, can we review? You know, what his plans were and say, yeah, this was, you know, adequate. Um, as a bridge, unfortunately, it's not.
Weren't we provided drawings, I guess?
He must have.
Handstitched drawings on a.
I haven't seen that. That was a sketch that was Tom Land.
Are you, oh, was it? Are you asking if we were provided with? No, I saw something, but.
Yeah, that was provided by Tom Land.
Okay.
After the fact?
Or he sketched it, I don't know. It was just what he sent me.
Yeah, so I, yeah, so answer Barbara's question, as, as liaison for the Woods Committee.
Yeah.
Nothing, nothing, I never, it was, Tom was in all the meetings. But I've been, since I became liaison, the project was never mentioned once.
But you were, you were, you, you joined in May, right? And this happened in February?
June, no, I don't know, it must have been.
No, it had, it was built sometime, we figured sometime.
They're not built, built, no, but, but I'm saying that, the, but, but the plans and all, a lot, there was a lot of conversation that took place.
The last conversation that happened in the Woods Committee was in February?
Yeah.
Vocally gave us.
Right.
The proposal, not a written.
Right. Right, so you were, you were on the council, right?
No, no, no.
Yeah, so. We can't use you as, as a scapegoat.
No, that's why I looked at the minutes, just tried to get, get some understanding of what the process was.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
But it was, it, it, the process was going along. With, 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 well, it was going along and then when you basically didn't agree, the committee. Had, you know, sent it back and said, no, you need dun, 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 then it went to the different direction.
Agree or disagree, we said, we.
That's what I mean, well, you.
Why would I do that?
Yeah.
Reverse?
Yeah, in other words, talk to the Boy Scouts first.
Okay, so where are we at?
I don't know.
We know what we want, we just don't know how to get there.
Move, well, let's see. He wants to amend my motion, I, I mean, I think this, yes. Talk to the Boy Scouts first.
Yes.
And then do the empty thing. Yeah, because when you talk to the Boy Scouts, you may get some sort of paper from an engineer that says, I believe this is structurally sound.
Oh, I have, I have, I have every confidence that that was done correctly, and I think that from what I know about the bridge, it. The only question is long-term, you know, long-term lifetime, if you will. And that is our concern, I mean, if that's part of the building concern. Then he may, he may, he blew it, because lifetime for us is a very important.
So I guess, so I guess the question that we have is, is, is. What are we trying to prioritize out of the two, you know, like, safety and bridge, right, for, for the Boy Scouts is. Are we trying now to, to figure out how to, how to? How to, how to, uh, um. Save his Eagle Scout.
I got a suggestion, and I do want to save his Eagle Scout project, and I do want to have a safe bridge in the house. Try this on for size. I think the best, the 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 sole easiest way to save his project. Is to put the bridge back. But you will then say, oh, well, what about these safety concerns? Well, a a number of the concerns are longevity, and that does not apply for at least a year or more, more than a year. The other concerns may be due to who uses the bridge. Who's how steady they are, weather conditions, if it's wet, whatever, how about if we solve it this way? A sign says.
Cross it, you're wrong.
This bridge, yes, Pat, you're shaking your head. May be unsafe. During. Wet or whatever condition. Cross at your own risk. I think that is that, well, that meets my concerns in the short term. And then basically. Check off that we are going to fix that. We want to remove those signs. By putting, by by modifying the bridge so that we don't need those signs, that it will be safe for. Anybody who uses it, the handrail alone would do wonders. Um, you know, making it wider, maybe, maybe not, putting a handrail on a three foot bridge, probably fine. Um, you know, the fact that it's, it may, the banks may wear away. We'll just drop some riprap in there. It's no big deal and that will retard any of that concern. And then a year from now or whenever, we can simply put some extensions on it, put the handrail on and get rid of the sign. This way, what we do, where we we has the least chance of impacting his project. I think it accounts for any reasonable safety concern. I mean, we could, you know, we're putting, I mean, we have, we've made it. Significantly safer to cross this. Gully.
If someone doesn't want to cross the bridge, they can go down.
Like, well, they can turn back. That's, it's what everybody does.
I mean, they have an option to go, to go down the gully or go across the bridge.
They actually done, it's a narrow crossing.
But that's what it is now without the bridge.
No, that's what I'm saying. If you put the bridge there, then you obviously. You know, alternative of just going down the gully.
It goes down the gully anyway. The bridge, you're gonna walk across the bridge. The bridge is fine.
I I like, I like.
I like it too.
Yeah. I I think it's, um. It's straightforward for now and we can read.
Right.
Get a kid his Eagle project.
The Scouts are come and gone.
Then you can fix it.
We can do what we need to do.
Right.
I like that idea.
And then, yeah.
And it's not like this is the most traveled pathway. Like, who here has actually been on that pathway?
Hundreds of times.
Saturday.
Rob, Rob was there once.
Okay, uh, okay, so.
Yeah.
I'm just getting to that, so now I'm gonna ask for. I'm gonna ask that everybody withdraw their amendment and their, uh, and the motion.
I will.
Do a motion to do basically what I just said.
Mm-hmm.
I I don't withdraw my amendment.
Okay.
I don't agree with with your plan.
So you don't want to save, I I I'll tell you why I don't think the project is is salvageable. I would have to talk to the Boy Scouts. Okay? Uh, because this bridge goes over a three foot drop. That I think they failed to take into consideration. It wasn't just a bridge, it it, you know, I've got a diagram. Who sent that diagram? Dave, you sent that one. The bridge, the uh, the the park service bridge over, it was longer, it was long, it was four, it was longer than ten feet.
It was like a fifty, twenty foot span.
It didn't have to be, but this thing went like this, like this, had struts, you know.
Railings on.
It was a hugely safe bridge. Okay.
It's also a couple of questions here because the reinstalling that bridge. It can't stay there for that long because it's not the proper grade of of treatment. But secondly, it has to be anchored. Solidly on both ends and it has to be long enough so that it can be properly anchored in, you know.
Well, I think really, I I didn't think it was a problem from the short term.
Oh, I'm the one who listed it up, remember? I lifted it up on my side.
Yeah, I could lift it up as well. I confirm that.
I'm just on either end, I just picked it.
Can the bridge be, if you're gonna use that bridge? Can the trail be moved? Over somewhere where the ditch is less wide, maybe less feet, so we have more of the bridge sitting on both sides.
That'd be a safety, a solution to the safety thing, but trying to leave the bridge in place long enough to. To satisfy the.
Why he couldn't get his. Badge, I mean, he did what he was told. And he did it the way it was supposed to be built. I don't see why he can't get his. Uh, badge for it. Um.
So I think, I think where it would fall down, fall apart, is the requirement. That Pat brought up in the Eagle Scout manual in terms of. The permissions and permits they're supposed to get for their project. So if the Eagle Scout. Either a scout mess or the person who's in this district that approves Eagle Scout projects finds out that he didn't get the correct permissions. And the bridge was taken down, that's where it would fall apart. I, that that would be my guess.
May still be the same way.
Could be, yeah.
If if you put the bridge back up and they find out he never got the permission.
Right, right. I say, yeah, that's, there is that danger.
He modifies and we give him a permission in the town, it's modified. To make it safer and anchored and then we give him a permit to do it.
So but there's a. He may not have the time. There's a timeline when you're a scout in terms of when you, it's in your senior year of high school, you only have, the cutoff. Is probably this fall when he can submit his paperwork for being for his Eagle Scout project. If I remember correctly, it's been, you know, eight, ten years since I've been in a scout troop, not me, but my son. So so I I'm I'm talking off the top of my head a little bit, so. He he might be up against a hard deadline of not being able to resubmit paperwork to do the project over again. That's just my guess.
And he said he didn't have time.
He said he didn't have time, yeah, because he's he's a senior in high school, obviously.
Even if we put the bridge back. I I'm just saying, if you just sort of etch a sketch and stick that little supper back there. Would not be anchored or anything.
Yeah.
He's always have the per- permit.
But he, but he thought he did.
He thought he did.
We're, we're going to approve the bridge being there until next June. And if somebody wants to go and check that bridge out after every storm, they're welcome to do it, but I am. One hundred percent certain. That Mr. Works could put that bridge back. And it wouldn't go away before before next June. Nothing would happen to it. Of, by June. You you have to see it. It was, it was, it was structurally sound. It just gave, you know, it it just, um. Um, would would be problematic for certain people walking across, I believe. And the weather conditions. You know, would would mean that. Well, the three foot drought meant that you didn't really want to have a mishap. And weather conditions would enhance the likelihood of a mishap. And a handrail would have solved those problems entirely, I think. Um, but, you know, but for nine months or twelve months. With a warning that, you know, no handrail. Use it, draw on risk. I mean, I I'm thinking of a few things you just say, you know. Best you can do is warn people. That, I don't, that will be.
So that's the whole reason why it's important to have a safety engineer. You know, give a stamp of approval, because all of us can sit around here and argue about what we think is safe or don't think is safe. But like, we don't know what the standards are. But a safety. Have a psych visit. I don't know if the engineer who looked at the Boy Scouts plans. Came out and did a psych visit. It's situational.
Yeah.
It may be, as you said, Peter, a fine bridge if you're on a flat section of land with six inch, six inch drop. Did the engineer know it was gonna be a three foot drop and it was gonna be on eroded banks of a stream? So if somebody's looking at this. Out of context, you know, just just looking at plans, it like looks like a nice little bridge. It depends on where you put it. Situational.
So so. This, we can, I I can agree with what you're saying, but I'm gonna go back to my first statement. Is that we don't have the information we need to make the decision. And we need to go and find out what it would take. To get this approved. And then if we, if if it's like.
For the Boy Scouts, you mean?
The Boy Scouts, yeah. If it's time sensitive, then we go and we can have a special meeting to approve it if we have to do that. After we talk to the Boy Scouts and find out what we need to do.
Just make the motion about resolving that and because there's no bridge there, there's no safety issue right now. It's, it is what it is, so. Figure out what we can do for him and then if if that's the way we do it, and then, you know, otherwise you're doing something and like.
We're not structural engineers, we don't want the voice, we don't have, we we just need to get more information. That's all. And then we can make, I'm sure we'll all come up with the same decision.
And I think, you know, it doesn't need, the bridge doesn't need to go up immediately, so it's not there, so I think the main issue for us is to make sure that this.
Well, he completed this project.
Complete, but we need to make sure.
And it's not, if you take it away, it's not.
But but we can find out, let's find out, and then we can put it back if we have to.
Okay. We can.
But we could talk all night. I don't think we're gonna be happy with the deci- any decision we come up with unless we find out.
Break it down.
Yeah, get a little more information.
If we call the main Boy Scout office downtown and maybe find somebody to talk to. You know, outside of the whole process and just.
Yeah, but they're gonna go to the regulations and say.
They are gonna go to the regulations.
That's not gonna happen.
But is it his fault that he was?
I'm sure if they're bureaucrats, they don't care about that.
Boy, yeah, all depends on which.
So do we have to vote on your motion or can we amend yours or how can we proceed?
Since this was an amendment.
I meant to my motion.
Right, and it was seconded and we've had discussion. It needs to be voted up or down or amended. Now, Chris had an amendment to, um. Switch. The order of it, contact the Boy Scouts first, which is kind of what you're saying, Peter. Uh, and then. See, you know, what can hap- maybe he's got something that says, oh, this passed the safety standards, I don't know. But, um, so you could move to amend my amendment to switch those.
But then, so the contact, contact Boy Scouts would be the first part, and then the second part is once we talk to them and figure out what they need. Right?
Somebody, uh, just.
Yes.
I just need clear. Talking to the Boy Scouts, but working with Brooks, but we are, we're not gonna, somebody was concerned. Somebody's concerned that we're gonna go to the Boy Scouts without involving him first, and we would not do that, but, well, you know, it's good to.
That's his project.
Yeah, just to make sure we are all clear on that.
Yeah.
So is that what you're moving?
Who's gonna do it?
There he is.
Yeah, okay.
Whoever, yeah.
Book stuff.
What's that?
Wells.
I would do it if you didn't want to do it, but.
So do I make a move?
About to be gone.
Yes.
I would, I would do it, John. I wouldn't mind doing it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So let me make a motion to amend Barbara's motion.
Which is an amendment, you've amended her.
And do the Boy Scout contact first, figure out what. It would take, and then they do a safety review subsequent.
That's helpful.
And to leave the bridge. Disassemble.
Disassemble.
Yeah.
Because we don't know if it's, even if we put it back, we don't know if it's gonna help them or not, right?
Right, right.
We don't know.
So if it helps them, then we put it back up.
Certainly helps them.
Yeah.
If you put it back up, nothing, it's like it, we.
Never happened.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We need a time machine.
Like we, you know, our objectives are not, are not so severe that we we believe it ought not to be there.
And he's certainly not gonna get credit if the bridge doesn't exist anymore.
Well, that's right. I I mean, my feeling is we could put it back up and do everything you've said. And I don't care if Patty's frowning because it simply isn't that unsafe.
Right, so, right.
In the, in the near term.
If we put it back up, do we even have to talk to the Boy Scouts?
No, because we don't, we don't know if putting it back, it's, it's. The damage is already done.
Yeah, if you put it back up, then that we're saying that his, it's complete and that lets him, you know, the project be written off and then we can address fixing it.
Contacted the Boy Scouts.
You can fix it right away.
That's what we're saying, we don't know. That's why, we don't know. We need to find out.
Is look, we we, you know, here's the story about how the, about Brooks, how Brooks was misled. Into thinking the town had had, uh, put a stamp of approval. We're very upset. About that it happened, but we're not upset at Brooks at all, and we don't want to imperil his Eagle Scout badge because. He had no way, and it would have been an extreme measure to find out that, uh, that he was being given poor.
I think that is exactly the way to go.
Um, and then the bridge is there and the bridge, put the dang warnings up there if you're really worried about it.
Or put the railing on while you're waiting. I mean, you can just, I think.
But we, we can plan to put the railing. Okay, we, in the meantime, while we're planning, we have these signs, which, you know.
So do we amend the amendment of the amendment?
That I think.
I'm totally lost.
That stands the biggest chance of of of. Him coming out of this with his Eagle. Uh, badge. And us coming out with a, with a, with a usable bridge, nobody getting hurt, which was always a. Low probability, but I think a real one. Alright.
So do I withdraw this?
No, we first have to deal with the amendments.
Nobody's seconding.
Well, we can call the question and just dispose of the amendments.
So we're still kind of amending.
So we're still amending yours. So it was amended that we, um, put the bridge back, which then we don't have to talk to the Boy Scouts except to let him know that the bridge is intact, right?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna talk to them about making. About the process he got caught in. I think what we had to do is be upfront about how he got caught in a process of, which, which. Frankly, he was very unlikely to be able to avoid.
But the bridge is there.
The bridge is there, we, you know, the local structural engineer said, I'm sure it's perfectly sound. Okay. Um, and we want him to get his Eagle. As for doing this work and 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 properly. And, um, and and, um. The by. By not, by be, by not being steered to a town review, our separate. Safety concerns, not structure, but safety, and we would have looked at the structure too, but the safety issues weren't addressed. That's all. I'm not gonna tell them what we'll do to it. We just want him to get his badge.
Right.
As soon as that's a, that's a given or that nobody's gonna object because of this. Issue. Then, uh, then we can fix the bridge.
Well, maybe, say, safety, you mean, be specific to say functionality.
Functional, that's right. I should stop using safety.
Because I use it everywhere.
Use public, public, safe for, you know, wide public.
So, so the motion would be that we discuss this with the Boy Scouts first.
Right.
And then. Put the bridge back.
Uh, put the bridge back.
Back.
While and then, and while we're going to discuss.
Discuss it, okay.
Peter's gonna have it all resolved tomorrow, so don't worry.
So the bridge goes back and and at the same time, we're talking with the Boy Scouts to assure that.
Yes.
He gets.
So we're gonna do both things?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
And and with the.
Without doing.
You know, and you can put in the resolution that the functional safety concerns. Um, um. Will, will, um. It it is, it is the, our intention to address the functional safety.
Well, functional.
Functional safety in 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 the future.
In the future, that's.
But where does the safety review come in then?
We're gonna do the structural safety.
Structural, functionary.
The functional review is, um. A whole nother thing.
So you're suggesting. Peter, talk to the Boy Scouts. Then the bridge gets put back. Then. Peter, talk to the Boy Scouts, then the bridge gets put back, then what happens?
Th- then um if they're, i- i- if. If, once they hear the process that he was caught in. That the town, you know, but um would 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 now perform a. Functional safety review, not a structural. That that that, you know, once we were assured that his project was accepted.
And then fix it.
So, and then what, then there's gonna be safety review and?
And a- a- and then we are going to modify the bridge appropriately.
So it it sounds like once there's a project turnover, in other words. We could go and do whatever.
Then we.
That's exactly.
What we're looking for is that project turnover.
Yes, that that's really, the whole thing is designed to get past that.
We wanna get past the Boy Scouts.
Yeah.
And make sure they're satisfied with his meeting the requirements for the Eagle project. And once that happens, once he is, that they're signing off on it, then we can do anything we want.
Yeah, like buy a car.
Because then it's a handoff to us at the town and we can.
We can modify it.
Can modify it any way we want to, and we can do all the studies on it, we want to.
Right.
But uh we wanna, we wanna get the point of that handoff from the Boy Scouts to us, yeah.
So we have to deal with the motion that I made. And if we vote that down, then we have to have a new motion based on what you just said.
Yeah.
Okay, so it was going on Barbara's motion?
Yeah. Yeah.
All favor of the amendment? All favor of the amendment.
Barbara's amendment?
Yeah.
Barbara's amendment.
Okay.
Indicate by saying.
Do you have one?
Rob, you're, I I can't find Rob, there is, you're in favor.
What was, wait, what review? Read the amendment again because.
So.
Yeah.
We had John's original motion. My amendment was to say, have the safety engineer look at the plan. Uh, take the spec- John had a lot of specifics about it, take those out. And then third, contact the Boy Scouts and sort of like make things right, that was my motion.
So you're in favor of doing it in that order?
Yes.
So it's just a, it's just a different order, kind of.
Well.
Well, we're not gonna, we're not gonna put the bridge back, you're saying?
This doesn't, well, this this would not have the bridge put back until.
Until.
There was a safety, you know, it was.
But then you're modifying his.
Well, but that's the motion though.
No, that's motion, yeah, that's not.
I'm I'm I'm, so that would mean that you're then modifying his, his plan, which will probably mean that he won't get.
I I don't know what his requirements are.
I would, I would, okay.
Well, you would.
I would want to have our priority be to have this kid get his Eagle badge. Um so.
Yeah.
I would say that that would be number one.
Yeah, nah.
Whatever we needed to do, if that, put the bridge back, do what you s- and then as soon as he's signed off. Then we can immediately take it down, modify it, do whatever we wanna do with it, but. He will have gotten what he needs and and again, you know, this is not gonna be going on for years, we can, it can happen, you talk to him, he gets his badge. The bridge, then we can come back and, you know, say, what are we gonna do with the bridge, or the Woods Committee can decide what they wanna do.
Yeah, because based on the deadlines for the Eagle project, it has to get resolved in the next probably two to four weeks or something like that.
Yeah.
So just, I I.
And I appreciate what you're saying, Barbara, but we're in a um, you know. We gotta make some kind of, you know, yeah. And 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 I just like haven't, you know, done those trails and all that, like you guys have all done. Um, I don't, I I personally see, as John said, I see zero um, you know, safety risk in that.
I don't know, I, just from five minutes of Googling on the internet, it looks like it probably needed a tow board to comply with OSHA standards. Doesn't need a railing, but it probably needs.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And it doesn't have a tow board.
Yeah.
So, you know, I mean, I I I think if the the, if if Brooks and all of his advisors. Did all the things that he described, then if we show this to a safety engineer. The safety engineer is probably gonna say, yeah, it's fine. And if they didn't, then and the safety engineer says it's not fine, then he probably doesn't deserve to get the Eagle Scout badge. You know, but again, I wanna help him, I think we should do everything reasonable to do that, but the priority has got to be. A bridge that is, you know, safe.
But didn't we make the distinction between functionally sound and meeting safety standards? I think that is our catch, way to get around it to allow him, he built a functionally. Stable bridge, doesn't meet the specific standards that we need, but I'm not sure that. That should be part of why he gets qualified for this.
I mean, I, look, I have no idea what an Eagle Scout's expectations are, but. If you build a footbridge that is structurally sound, but so unsafe that no one should walk across it, not because it's gonna collapse, but because it likely to fall off. You know, wh- what the heck, why, I don't think that is a meritorious endeavor. And I also don't care, like, our job as the representatives of the town. Is to protect the town and the people who live in it and walk in its woods. So, again, I hope all this is academic, it probably is, because it sounds like they put a lot of thoughtful effort and work.
Right.
And it 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 may well be that it is like perfectly safe structurally and safe to walk across. That's probably what someone is gonna tell us, but I think we should take like a day or two, hopefully, to, you know, to get. Someone to look at this, look at the plans, look in, you know, it's too bad the bridge is disassembled, but they can at least look at the. The the photos and the um the diagrams and say, yeah, this is fine, or no, it's not. If it's fine, then we should immediately put the bridge back up, so that's why I voted in supportive motion.
Or we could put the bridge back up, so that's like to come out and look at it and. Um tell us what needs to be done and at the same time.
Well, that's a fair point, if the, if the safety engineer says, I can't evaluate it just from the diagram, I need to see it. Reassembled and put back up, then that then in that situation, yes, I would.
Well, so it'd probably be easier just to put the bridge back up, because we don't have a diagram, so. I could certainly draw one up, but we don't have that.
Then we couldn't, then we have something to evaluate.
Yeah.
Well, we can certainly contact.
As soon as like we can compromise and put the bridge back up, get an engineer out to look at it. And and e- and then we can delay improvements for a couple of weeks until he gets his badge. I think that's a great compromise.
And if you're afraid that somebody's gonna fall off the bridge.
Oh, come on.
Terracate it.
Yeah. Put up the sign, like he said.
Put up the sign, Barry, I mean. We're being a little. People are not gonna be.
I know, I know.
Get the kid his badge first, put the bridge up, say, it's done, you're great, go on, and then. That second, we can get an engineer out there, figure it out, meantime, block it off if you're afraid people are gonna be falling off.
Right, 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 right. Make that motion.
Movers and seconders of the existing move to amend. Withdraw, we need to vote.
Alright, well, that's gonna be the one, and, yeah.
Nobody's withdrawing this, amendment.
I don't have.
Who was the second?
Rob.
Yeah.
He's not approving, they're not approving. Okay, so we are voting on the amendment.
I thought we already.
Barbara's.
Yeah, we.
Barbara.
Well, I guess there were two, two.
There were two opposed, we didn't go to the eyes.
No, there were two.
I mean.
There's two four.
Two four.
There were two four, two four.
Amendment fails. Now we have the original motion and a seconder.
I can withdraw that.
Oh, wow.
I withdraw that amendment.
Who seconded it, Peter seconded.
Oh, I did, alright, I'll I'll concur and withdraw also.
Withdraw, I think you have to vote it down.
No, I think you can move withdraw, it's it, I I believe it's it's the movers and changers, alright. Oh, you wanna vote it down, we'll move to a vote on the main uh, on the main motion, all in favor? All opposed? Alright, motion fast. Does anyone want to offer another emotion on the uh, on on. On dealing with the disassembled.
I can try. I move that we reassemble the bridge, um allow. Brooks to, I don't know, whatever, do we have to do anything if it's put back up, does he just?
I don't think so, but we wanna approach the Boy Scouts.
So we wanna um put the bridge back, approach the Boy Scouts to assure that. He is complied or that he's met the requirements or whatever it means.
Current issue with with whether or not he he.
And then after that, get a structural engineer to examine the actual bridge and make recommendations for changes.
Second.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, debate on this motion.
Do you, do we want, uh, is that order the what, is that the order that we wanna do with it? But there's three things taking place.
Don't say then, this is what we want to do, we can do them all at once.
Yeah.
So, okay, so I agree.
There's no sequence, in fact, this is what we're going to do.
Yes.
That's not a sequence.
No sequence, good.
Don't worry about it, we got a plan, we just get the plan. It's made, obviously, we have to, we have, it's pretty self-evident to get a plan, we're gonna have somebody look at the bridge, we better have a plan.
Is it, so who's gonna review it later, safety engineer or?
That, that's what you were, yeah.
I already, when I, when I would, when I thought immediately when you say, well, who knows the safety engineer. I think the county probably deals with this sort of thing, probably find somebody. Who, if they don't handle it, knows who they can recommend, we'll probably do this for nothing, almost nothing.
They fixed for them.
No.
Somebody for us.
Uh, because this is too hot a topic.
We need someone.
We need somebody outside.
Disinterested party.
Yes.
Alright, alright, okay, but anyway.
No conflict of interest.
Alright.
Okay, so that would be my first effort, would be to find somebody from, go through the parks department.
Yeah.
Or case, for somebody then knows some, something about. These sorts of things in woods and whatever.
I'm beginning to vote.
Okay, so, no one, no further discussion, all all in favor of the new motion?
Alright.
Alright.
I have five here, Rob.
Oh, there you go.
That looked like grudging.
Yes, it was.
Alright, motion passes, I'm glad, I'm sure Kathy got it verbatim.
You read it to you?
Yeah, could you tell us?
Now, read that back.
Fortunately, we have the recording.
Yes.
Uh, I think we have the recording, alright. That, now we move on to repaving the basketball, we got two bids, now they open one. And uh, if they're here, well, we're live, so I couldn't prepare anything in advance because. Need to do it. Made Atlantic asphalt, did you talk to them? North Atlantic asphalt?
What about them?
Did you talk with them?
Yeah, they've been here twice.
Well, their bid is twenty-three thousand dollars.
Oh, it's gonna be thirty thousand.
Two hundred and fifty-five.
Okay.
Two hundred and fifty-four. And.
Baseball court?
Yeah.
Ross Consulting.
What was that?
Is twenty-nine thousand four hundred and sixty.
Uh huh.
What happened to the fourteen thousand dollar?
You know, it's been so long, um fifteen thousand.
Terrorists, whatever.
They say terrorists. Terrorists, they say terrorists.
They have to bring in the concrete.
Oh, terrorists, terrorists, yeah.
Then there'll be two.
Those are the two bids.
And the third is uh.
Do I have a motion to award the contract? Under which we can discuss this.
Um I'm, I'm.
The budget is twenty thousand, just so people know that.
Okay, yeah.
For the basketball?
I looked up the budget while we were having other discussions, um and it was called. Uh. Playground maintenance is the line item, it's twenty thousand, which means. I think we had five to begin with, we added fifteen to cover. The basketball court back when we thought it was gonna be fourteen. So if we, so that took it to twenty. Meaning, we had hoped that there would be some leftover for something else, so. Um, if we award it, we just have to figure out, you know, we're over budget.
Do they say, did that include lining the court?
I was just gonna look at one of them to see what involved, right?
Yes, do they have lining in there or is, because they were supposed to put that in as a additional.
As an addition.
And then we, we don't have money left over for any other maintenance. In the playground area. Just.
Okay. I recommend that we defer because the bids are well over expectation as well as the budget. That we defer action on this for uh a further discussion until October. And we can look at the RFP and you can determine whether they met the requirements of the bid. Should they have been set made a separate amendment?
Well, it's like, it's ridiculous for, I I haven't even seen what the.
Exactly.
So how we like doing this, and plus, I know that the, there's a company that, you know, the original company. Would do it, well, let's not, we'll talk about this offline, we don't need to talk about it, yeah, let's not talk about that, yeah, this is not, this, this bidding process. Um, did not help us the way it was done.
Okay, so we need, formally, we need a motion to defer.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I'll second it then.
Alright, any for, any discussion? All in favor of deferring action, that passes unanimously. Alright, next item is the municipal leaf composting pilot extension.
Yes, the Sustainability Committee um would like to um get an extension on this, they. I think you all saw, they've had a pretty successful two years and they're learning a whole lot about. How to make it and and have increased the number of bins, so what they would like to do. Um for year three is to have uh continue the two bins in, at the maintenance court. And add a second bin in the bamboo area. Um, they would also like to get um the contractor's support both from RJ and from the um. From the Good Earth, um who actually helped a lot out last year on on request to keep some of the leaves in, so they would, they would like that to be part of it. And um, they like completion of the rain barrel.
I was just about to um, yeah, no, thank you, we should definitely put it in there.
So that, so that to the, because it's been held up, you have a rain barrel, but.
And we have gutters.
Gutters need to be fixed so that the water can go in the rain barrel, which will help them to to um feed the compost. So those are the three requests for year three.
Can I ask a question, what impact uh on the bamboo uh area would having a second bin have?
Uh.
Well, you know what the impact is on the first one, so just, it would just be a double.
The impact on the, on the um.
Be minimal.
The bamboo.
They cut a. Well, sorry, what was the question about bamboo?
I didn't have.
The bamboo grew up through the compost pile and died. Fill it out, so bamboo is not a problem.
Yeah, okay.
It's, it's not a large area.
Only my question, I wanted to get rid of all that bamboo, but.
That's not a question here.
For the compost pile, it's okay, it works overnight in the bamboo area.
So just wanna extend it a little bit. They wanna add another.
Can somebody remind me how big the bin is? When they talk about a bin, how big is it?
Uh, about three.
No.
Six, maybe.
Six, six to eight feet.
Yeah. At the most, yeah.
Circular or rectangular?
Uh, it's oblong.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any objections to more bamboo being uh? Being uh.
Murdered.
Move. I don't think you, I don't think you get murder banned, but.
Yeah, exactly.
No, okay, I just wanted to find out, alright.
So, can I ask a question then, regarding rain barrel? That's part of it, right?
Yeah, we already bought it, already bought the rain barrel, what we need the gutters.
So, what, let's see, was there, was there a budget?
They've already bought it.
It's a hard purchase, right?
For the soffits. For the sopits and the gutters.
No, the gutters, yeah, but the sopits, we could actually install the, Steve doesn't want, if Steve wasn't here, I would say this one. No, but we could, the sopits, we're, it's just, to do the, we don't have to do all the sopits around the whole building. Because the, the back of the building is where they really run it out more. In the front, we could just paint the sopits and put the gutter up, it's only like a twelve-foot strip of gutter, to catch the rainwater, fill up that barrel.
Would the sopits, it's not rotten, it's, it's.
Not in the front, I don't think, I think it's not that bad, but we should, we should do it all correctly, anyway, that's, that's a project that needs to be done.
Okay, well, well, this is their proposal, it's not actually a, a, there's no plans, I mean, whoever does it.
Right, we're gonna, yeah, you're right.
How to do it.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I mean.
Yeah.
Presumably, it, the, the question was, is it practical to do what they're asking, and the answer is yes.
Hmm, yes.
Just, but still, you have to do it.
It's not, it's like hardly any, is there any money even involved with this?
Well.
Hardly.
They, they probably have a, the sustainability has a budget.
Yeah, they have a budget for it.
It's minimal, right?
Mostly work on their part.
They're all volunteers.
Yeah, that, okay, with your, answering your question.
Yeah, yeah, I was just trying to figure where all the funding was coming from.
Okay.
I'm gonna look it up, they, they, sustainability has a budget, let me look it up.
Yeah.
I don't think, the beds, bins don't cost anything, we get them from the county. And the compost is made from free leaves and a lot, a lot of labor.
Yeah. A labor.
So the cost would be maintenance, but that's not on the Sustainability Committee, I don't think.
They have eighteen hundred dollar budget, um. I have to get my report back up to see if they've touched any of it yet, so.
All right, you don't need.
And we all need that.
There's money in the budget.
Yeah, let's.
Blow their budget on rain barrels, that's their problem.
We've already bought it. It's been sitting there for a year.
Fine.
Make a motion?
I did, I made a motion to.
We have a motion, there was second.
I'll second it.
People, so. Okay, there's no further discussion, all in favor.
Hi.
I mean, all right, motion passes, thank you.
Another motion.
Here we go, yeah, look, I put it on the. Motion to submit testimony to the EPA.
So, um, as John said, the um, the Trump administration and their uh great wisdom is, wants to um reverse is, says that this um this ruling of the Supreme Court in two thousand and nine is not valid and that uh CO2 does not constitute um a green uh pollutant, that it actually helps feed the plants in the air and so that we should so they want to change that, and if they do change it, um, all, many pollutant and emission um things that have gone on since since that will, not only the, the vehicles, but, but others, correct? Correct me if.
It goes beyond that, it's also affects uh the motor vehicle.
Yeah.
Off mission.
Right, and the, the, the draft has quite a bit of information about the direct impacts of accelerated climate change on Washington Grove.
But this, you have to read this draft, and this is another kudos to
Yeah, they've.
Unbelievable volunteerism and the, the expertise that we have in this, in this town to put together this and, and the, you know, it's a time deadline, and it's remarkable on how they cover, make it about our town and, and cover what, what the impact are overall, and I just, I can't say enough about about how this kind of stuff happens, but anyway. So we're just making a motion that they, it's not quite complete, but making a motion that they can submit it um in public testimony. Um, in the defense.
Mayor will find it.
That the mayor.
For half of the town, when it.
Signed by, by the mayor and the chairman of Sustainability Committee, but, you know, however you want it.
Right.
That did that.
I'll second the motion.
John Porter again, second.
Again, that's.
Yeah.
Second to the, try, yes, square. Square that. Yeah.
Any further discussion on this? All in favor of approving the testimony, thank you, excellent.
I have another motion.
I know, next item is motion to purchase portable radar sign warning signs. Okay, well, uh, Mary and Chris sent around their evaluation recommendation. So, Mary?
Um, I hope everybody had the chance to read it, we basically got um estimates from four different companies on it. Um, the ranges were, um, I think the most expensive was almost five thousand, the cheapest was thirty-two. Um, pretty much not a whole lot of difference between them, but anyway, we, we narrowed it down to um, one company radar sign and um, they're, for several reasons, um. They um are, are they, they have contracts with a lot of local municipalities, they have it in Rockville and several places in, in Maryland, they're the only ones that have a Maryland um DOT approved products list whatever that's worth, but they are the only one, none of the other people's products were on that. Um, they will offer us uh a deal with buying two signs, um. That is better than, there was another company that offered, offered a two-sign deal, but it was noth- nothing like this. Um, the, if we get two signs for six thousand, they are, are willing to work with us for, you know, so that we don't have to submit an RFP that they would sell us one, and then, um, you know, on trial and then sell us the other one, um, both for use cost, so we would get, we would get two signs, um. They, all of these companies have software that does, that collects data, so, um. This uh radar sign has a um software that they give it to you, and then they update it constantly. Some of the other companies will give you a year, and then you have to, have to continue to renew, so that was another thing in their favor. Um, the only difference that they have, um, that they don't offer, that one other company does offer is, is a bidirectional sign, so it, it will take, um, you know, it'll it'll pick up the, the speed from both directions, but I talked with um the gentleman in, in Rockville, who they have eleven, eleven sites they've purchased, and he said they went with the unidirectional because the bidirectional are not as, as accurate, and Chris and I talked about it, and, you know, we can turn the signs around, it's not like we have eight hundred thousand cars going through so if we want to get it in the other direction, you just have to turn them around. Um, so that's why we picked them. The, the biggest decision, um, that I guess we have to make is whether, um if you decide to go with this company is whether we get a, a solar-powered um signs or battery-powered. Um, the solar, um, is a little bit more expensive, they're about five hundred dollars more machine. The, um the problem with them might be finding inadequate, you know, on all the streets, excuse me, all the streets are placed that gets enough sun. Um, but you can, if, if it runs low, you can use an AC power source to um, to boost the battery and Chris volunteered to take his truck around, and if, if that's necessary to do that, you can't actually take the batteries out of the signs and, and, and power them up someplace, they're, they're in, they're in the signs. Um, the battery-powered are um cheaper, but you're gonna have to take, physically take them out of the signs and charge them. Um, we could get an extra battery, they aren't that expensive, they're about eight, yeah, three hundred dollars. Um, so that you could readily have one, but it's gonna require um testing somebody to, every two weeks, go, to go to the signs and switch them out and, and keep track of it, so, um, for those reasons, we thought that, that. That solar power would um, would make more sense, um, and take care of themselves, um, the other part of it um, besides picking, would be to, to have to determine where to place the signs, so.
Right.
Um, what, what we would propose is, is rotating, if we get one sign or if we get two signs to you know, different, different streets that we know have um complaints of, of traffic volume, where people, you know, looking to abate the speed, and hopefully, um, all the um literature you read on this from these different, different companies, just having the signs up there actually slows people down and part of their data that they give you will, will show how many cars actually slow down when they see it. Um, they, they also will give you um the number of cars that go through, how many cars are speeding, you know, what the volume is, so we would get a lot of information about traffic on different roads, which I think would help us in decisions um for where we might need speed abatement, you know, in the future with, with, without, with some real um information, and there was one other thing.
How are they mounted?
They come with, um, they're, you have to have a pole, but they, they all come with, with the mount that attaches it to.
To, oh, so like a Mount Airy, like on telephone poles?
You didn't, you've investigated, or you looked at these at some point when you passed?
Years ago.
Years ago, they're just kind of.
Well, they're a lot different now than they were back.
Yeah, but it's just basically on a pole and they give you the mounting.
So question, then, regarding between battery and solar. Have you walked around and identified the poles you wouldn't want to put these on, and then see if they have enough sunlight hitting? I know you wanted to put them on Hickory, and, uh, at least on our side of Hickory, there's no sun hitting that at all, so, I'm just wondering if you made that analysis.
So, so the idea there would be to, you know, we're not gonna be using existing poles, we're just because these would be mobile, right, so.
I thought you said they went on a pole.
Yeah, but you could, like a signpost, so you can just put a, like we have signs of, you know, and put a.
So, you don't have a mobile stand that goes around?
It's kind of like what Steve had done, I guess, with the, you know, the markers for the trails, where they have the sleeves, and you put a pole inside the sleeve. So that's the idea, is we'll have these sleeves.
Or you're gonna put new pole, permanent poles there?
Yeah, wherever.
Or I.
Located, you know, so you're not like, I put them on telephones.
Oh, yeah, that, yeah.
No.
Different.
Oh, that's what I was imagining.
Yeah, and then, and then from a security standpoint, you know, one of the things we're thinking about is, you know, once you put the sleeve in there to either, you know, I guess bolt it or whatever, so that somebody just can't readily come in and walk away with a a, a three to four thousand dollar sign, put it in her bedroom and watch it, you know, so.
Actually, one, the one of the radar has a possum, uh, they say has a possum thing so that if someone tries to tamper with the sign, it stops working, so. Apparently, they've had, you know, they've had problems with sandalism, yeah, exactly.
And then, you know, along those lines, too, we mentioned, you know, moving it around, uh, this one gentleman was telling us that, you know, he, he's familiar with HOAs where they do that, and then when they leave an open hole they'll put in like a speed sign to fill that hole, so somebody doesn't trip by now.
Oh, I see, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
And, I was just gonna say something else.
Oh, that, uh, the false flash, I guess.
Oh, yeah, 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 they have for, I think like eighty dollars, you can get a, a false flash, so people will think that.
Oh, ah, I like that.
Yeah, so at least, that, that might, in, in the beginning, discourage people from coming down here, saying they're, you know, they're flashing, who knows, but. Yeah.
Getting back to my original question, but you think there's, in the various places you want to put this, there's enough sunlight to adequately power a solar unit?
My concern. Well, yeah, that was the same question, John.
Yeah, that, we, we were gonna walk around and look at that, but.
Yeah, yeah.
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 I'm just not sure where the town within their forest, you got enough light.
Well, so, you know, I think there's gonna be enough sunlight openings in, in, in areas, right? And because we're gonna be putting the poles in strategically, where we want to put them, and it's not using existing poles.
Okay, so you think you can do.
We, we might, you know, hopefully, we'll be able to find.
But they'll tell you how many hours of sunlight it needs per day, right? They'll tell you.
Yeah, how, how many hours do you?
Cause, cause the sun's going, obviously.
Well, it all depends on usage.
Yeah.
As far as how many cars are coming by?
Yeah, so how often it's flashing.
But they would, they, they would, they would be able to tell you, it like you need X amount of hours. Yeah. Or, or with the batteries.
If that's the case.
Yeah.
So if they can, if they, they can tell you that, you know thousand cars, you know, this is good.
That'll be five years.
This is good for a thousand cars, Washington Grove, that means.
All year.
It's good for a year, the, the, well, of course, the battery runs down, but the solar-powered would easily rejuvenate the battery. For that sort of.
It's, it's kind of, the, the, the technology running constantly, because it's gotta be sending out some kind of radar. Yeah, it's not, it's not like it's intermittently on.
No, but, so if you, so what is it that, like even with your cell phones, what is it that takes up the amount of uh, energy in your batteries, and it's when your screen is lit, that's number one, right, for, for usage? If this doesn't show the numbers, but you have the Doppler radar, you know.
Okay, so it's.
Probably not as uh energy-consuming.
It's the screen itself lighting up the screen, it draws the most amps or whatever.
Yeah, 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 and it's, you know, I'm, I'm assuming it's all LEDs.
So, explain to me the deal for the six hundred, the solar-powered ones.
Um, for the um solar-powered one, if you just buy one, it's thirty-six ninety-five for one unit. They will sell us two um for six thousand. Um, for the battery-powered one, it's two nine, two nine nine, basically three thousand dollars for one unit, and they will sell us um, two for five thousand.
They're gonna say five hundred dollars each by buying, by buying two.
Yeah.
By the way, the budget for this was five thousand dollars.
Ah.
Yep.
So if we need a motion to, to buy one or two, but the budget easily supports one, um which might be the way to go, but, you know, using one around, it's gonna be a moved fair amount if you have just one, that was my, my thought. Um, two, if we're gonna do it, you might as well go in a little bit, it's not like it's all that much money. Um, it's much more involved to, and put them in, in the ground, and.
And we'll get, we'll figure out if they actually do slow people down, so, you know, gathering data for a year or whatever will, will help us but then we'll still have two speed signs to put in, you know, the higher traffic areas, which will hopefully you know, we can use, continue to use to mitigate the speed.
And, and, the other thing too is, you know, that wasn't in, in uh I guess the reviews, pros and cons, but we were told, I was told, that they have a refurbishing uh uh program, where if something goes wrong with the sign or whatever after warranty, you send to them and they rip the guts out and put new guts back in and it's at a reduced price, I can't remember how much it was, but, you know, fairly reduced price, in other words, these signs can be fairly perpetual, you know, and just keep.
They have a two-year warranty, um.
Yeah, and that, and that's the other thing too, we missed the, the extended warranty because it ran out, uh, you know, uh, last month, so.
So you guys are recommending the, the solar ones then?
Yeah, yeah, well, so, so, and, and if you take a look at it, right, and you do the solar ones, they're saying that the batteries need to be replaced about every two weeks.
Need the battery-powered ones.
The battery-powered ones, I'm sorry, yeah, not the solar, and then if you buy a backup battery, because you want to be able to swap them out that backup battery's three hundred dollars.
So it's a wash, yeah.
And then there, yeah.
And then you have to designate somebody to be responsible for doing it.
So you're recommending the solar?
Yeah.
Once, and you recommend that we should get two, not one?
I would recommend.
Well, they had the option of getting a second on, on a later date, so you can start with one.
Oh, is that?
No, only though, they'll, they're letting, so we can do, pay for three thousand, so we don't have to submit an RFP so they said we could pay for one for three thousand, and then do another one for three thousand, so.
Oh, uh, at the same time?
Yeah.
Well.
Yeah, I mean, basically the purchase price when you stick a thousand.
Period, you know, they're probably pushing six months, but they, they said that they would be willing to work with us in order for us not to have to send out an RFP to all these other.
Because it'd be six thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, and then, and they did say, you know, that we could get, still keep that the, the, the bundle package price at six thousand or five.
So we'd only actually buy one, and then we would have a, a, the option to get the second one?
Not an option, we, we get, if we want to get the decreased price.
Yeah.
We have to, you know, we're gonna get both, but we buy, buy one for three thousand and then a month later buy another one for three thousand, so we don't have to put out an RFP for six.
Could you, could you ask them if we could buy one at the list price, and then we, if we buy the second one, we get it at a discount? So we have like, so we have like, you know.
Why would we want to do that?
Because we can't reneg on, it's part of the. Part of, I mean.
We're paying the full thirty six hundred dollars for the first one and then.
And that's not a deal, they're they're selling you two at once.
Well, we'll only do thirty six hundred, they're gonna say, fine, give you, you know, and then when you want to buy the second one, if you do, give me another thirty six hundred. There, it's a bundle package.
A bundle, you you're permitting to bind two two signs for three thousand.
Scouring around on five thousand dollars.
They're just willing to void the five thousand dollar purchase. Now that, um I I think it's arguable whether that even applies because we're buying a um. We're not buying a service or anything, they might buy an actual product.
Right.
And we're just negotiating for the best deal. So, you know, if Mary Mary and and Chris got compared, looked at competitive products. Have we they've done the competitive uh comparison.
So we've been, have you, do you actually ask them, say, I will buy two for four thousand nine hundred ninety nine dollars? Just for the hell of it?
Like bargain with them?
Well, yeah. Yeah, they have a huge bargain on that, I don't know. Anyway, okay, so what do you make, if you make your motion, we're probably ready to vote.
Yeah.
So I I just have a question, I I just want to make sure I understand, there there's five thousand dollars in the budget, but these are six?
If you buy two and a six, yes.
So where's the other thousand dollars come from?
We have contingency all over the place.
Okay.
All over the place.
Oh, dude.
The town has money, people's favorite phrase.
Under under my bed. I mean, um yeah, no, it's a that's a small ex- excess over the budget for this. I I mean, I wouldn't. Not that I recommend budget busting, but this is a small, easy to.
You know, one of the advantages too is is that this is, I think they said Bluetooth. And and so it's not like going to the cloud, we collect the data, they're gonna give us the software, we collect the data and we can massage it, we could come up with.
They've come up with charts, I think, and some of the stuff that, I mean, with a lot of a lot of different.
So you go and ask for the data from the sign that to you and then you.
To our software packages are there and then we just, yeah, they're standardized, so.
Okay.
We're ready, we're ready.
Anything else?
So is the best purchase two?
The motion is to purchase two of the radar uh uh solar. Sign, whatever, six hundred, it's a number.
Yep, six hundred.
Six hundred.
PC six hundred.
Good deal, we can get a lot of them at six hundred dollars. All right. I'll tell you that if I need to.
Does that include shipping?
Yes, it does, some of them don't, no other plus for this.
Okay.
All right, all in favor of the motion? Rob up there, any opposed?
There is, yeah.
That's unanimous, thank you.
All right.
All right, we finally have reached the playground master plan.
Oh.
And um we need a, so last week, we had a presentation of the plan. From the Playground Work Group. And um we um um deferred any any further consideration. To get um get resident input and to for perhaps the council delivering some questions. Chris had had something he knew he wanted to ask uh um in the interim, so we deferred that to this meeting. And here we are at this meeting and we need a motion either to to approve the master plan or something else. I think Chris has a motion.
So um, yeah, I I didn't write it down. So uh the the motion I would have is that we uh limit, you know, not approve the master plan. Limit limit this discussion to uh the format and structure of the master plan to see. If it's a if it's a comprehensive plan similar to the comprehensive plan for the Grove that we could use, future use.
Well, okay, I'm sorry. Um my my understanding was that we, I thought that this was being deferred because we did not give um. The proper notice to the town for feedback.
And and that's.
And that and that I know that like um some committees expressed um that they wanted. That they have more time to um put their feedback in, so I thought that this was being deferred. That was my understanding.
And that there wasn't.
The reason doesn't matter, it's the proposal to defer. He's making a proposal to defer.
Oh, you are? I didn't hear that.
It was more specific.
Wow.
But he, there were some other things in there.
Yeah, about making it a comprehensive.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, to tie it to the comprehensive plan.
Similar to, yeah, have a plan presented similar to the comprehensive plan.
Before they presented to to the council again? And that seems a lot more, yes?
Okay.
That, yeah, because we would have to look at that.
Let's just step back here.
That's a.
The only co- the only co- uh compilation, if I'm not mistaken. The only compilation of the plan was a PowerPoint set of slides.
Right.
With a lot of explanations and all terrific, but what Chris is saying, we need the plan. As a document, as a, in a in a format that is um is um valuable. For making decisions both in the near term and the long term. So they plan to do that, I know they do, we we don't need to get there, I I I have email. You may have gotten that email too, that they're working on that, they're not prepared with that today and we haven't seen it. So, you know, I think Chris is moving that we 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 um we um. Defer any discussion on the merits of the plan per se. We request further input, although we don't have the plan written, so we may have to wait for that to get to really. And once again, for resident resident town comment. Uh and lastly, um lastly, uh the the, as I say, the format. Um is important.
So is that, so with that, is there a second, I need a second.
Second? I'm sorry, I'm.
All right.
What'd you say?
Okay, we need any discussion on this procedure. You all saw, I'm I'll make a comment here, now that we have a motion on the floor. So as you know, Chris, uh we all saw he had a set of questions, they, the Playground Group worked on those questions. We, they delivered their answers, their responses today.
This morning, yeah.
Um they were pretty comprehensive, uh but of course, nobody had a chance to look at it. So um but they 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 will be, that will be useful in when we enter, when after, if this motion passes. After considering the the plan when it is in a form to propose adoption.
So I think, so that's the other thing too, I I I'm kind of confused, right, with this motion. I think it's gonna assist us with what Nancy had said about having a plan that we could go forward to ask. Uh for additional funding.
Right.
Right? And and yeah, I think this this would be uh the good next step. Instead of trying to, yeah, I'm I'm going too far.
So let me ask you a question, ask a question on that on that point. If we're gonna ask for funding on this plan, does that plan have to have some hard numbers?
And that's what I was gonna get to, yeah.
How do we ask for money if we don't know how much we're asking for or what the plan is we is proposing?
Yeah, because there were some numbers talked about, you know, when 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 we were being presented the PowerPoint slide. And and there were some numbers in the budget, if you if you recall, right? Uh and how those numbers came about, I don't know, we'll have to talk to the playgroup, uh Playground Working Group. Uh but if they could come up with a structured plan like we're talking about. And then somehow on the tail end, give us some rough numbers that they could. Uh justify for this year's funding to help us move forward. And then, you know, ultimately.
Jonathan has has his hands raised, I'm sure he's gonna address this whole mess. Jonathan, go ahead.
Yeah, so I'd like to address a little bit of that. I think one of the things we're looking to do with the uh comprehensive plan is not to have a. Specific predetermined budget in mind for the coming few years. Uh I think the thing we want to avoid is pitfalls of locking ourselves into specific pricing. That may not be attainable in the long run, for for example, because of inflation, we know inflation can tear away at any budget over a few years. Um so instead, what we're envisioning with this comprehensive plan is to lay out a few things. The vision, the mission, the theme and the aesthetics of the playground, so that's kind of our guiding principles here. So we're thinking of things first about what do we want Washington Grove's playground to kind of portray? Um and and what do we want the vibe to feel like for the families and and people who are there with their children? Uh so these criteria are um what will guide us in what we look for in pieces. Once we start looking at pieces, we we look at things kind of holistically and and look through. Uh whole booklets and pamphlets and and we, you know, do a lot of research. I think one of the things that you're talking about is very important to us, which is pricing. And and we do not want to get out of hand with pricing, um we're we're very price conscious. We know that, for example, the budget this year was thirty thousand dollars and we would work within that budget. Um so uh going forward, I just wanted to mention that our plan would be. If whether we're a work group or become a committee, is that just like with any other committee, we would ask for a budget? So uh if in the next year or two, we are working on a different set of zones. So zone one might be the priority this year, but let's say next year we determine that zone two, three and four are our priorities. We would look for pieces that would fit that and fit, again, the comprehensive plan. Once we determine the the pieces that may fit there, we would ask for a budget approval at that time. Again, we're we're requesting that of the council, so ultimately, the council is still gonna have approval, just like you would with purse strings for every other committee. You would agree or disagree with our budget request in that year, if that makes sense.
So can I ask you a question, Jonathan?
Yeah.
And anybody else uh uh on the Playground Working Group? But, you know, one of the things that I heard today that I that perked my ears was the fact that, you know, Nancy uh uh our senator. Is saying that there's money that she could grab uh and try to assist us. Because, you know, the mayor had brought up the fact that, you know, we're working on this Playground Master Plan and she said, you know, give me something. And I'll try to grab those funds, that that I think would help significantly, right? With in addition to the thirty thousand, we could get whatever else more.
So we we have, we have kind of a three pronged approach and and obviously can be expanded upon as we complete this comprehensive plan. But not only would we have um a a budget approved, uh but we would also uh look for possibility of private funding. Um where uh we could do like fundraising from interested um uh people in town. Who who might be interested in the like a a an installation. Um and we would also look for grants and and that grant process is exactly, I think, what you're talking about. And we would love to get um an a vision of any money that's available from the county, from the state or otherwise. Um that we could apply for and it is kind of the um chicken and the egg thing here. So we need a comprehensive plan so that we can apply for these grants. Um the grants are looking for specific approval by the municipality, the town or whoever. Um that we have gotten a sign off that this is exactly what we're looking for in the construction or rehab of a playground. Therefore, we can apply for X, Y and Z grants.
Can I add a little bit to that too?
Sorry?
Can I can I contribute a little bit to that too with uh?
I'll share on the playground.
Yeah. Yeah, so um um to go back to the, you know, the 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 question about a a budget. Um and what John was talking about with the uh the zones, what the what the comprehensive plan is gonna is gonna describe is gonna be, Jonathan mentioned these zones. There'll be ten zones and we would be voting on would be a a description of a vision for each zone. And so when we write up the plan, you'll have examples of different equipment that could fulfill the vision for that zone. Um and so like, for example, um the 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 first zone might have a large piece of equipment that's somewhere like in the twenty thousand dollar range. So that's like a a ballpark for one particular zone. And for the later zone, um you might see some examples of equipment with some estimates of what those could cost. That may or not be what we come back and and request. So hearing that that um Nancy um King has um funds potentially, we can maybe look at different equipment that might be more expensive as well. But it would fit in with the vision for that particular zone, so when we come back in the future with different requests. That the 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 specific equipment that we'd ask for uh would fit in within that vision for the zone. So you're you're sort of pre approving the vision and then when we come back and request specific equipment, it would it would align with that, with with those visions for those different areas.
I'm wondering if there's a way we can find out like how to apply for and what funds Nancy King's talking about. Cause she seemed to suggest that there was a time timeframe that need to get it in before the funds disappear. So um if there was a certain amount or if you could submit part, I mean, have a comprehensive, but submit submit part to to there. I mean, I don't want to miss it if it's a time.
Right, we can follow up with her on that. Um if if one of you, and you know, can uh remind me. I can definitely still have one of her staff and answer that question and but I'm sure we can get the answer as to what uh. What that funding source was was and what they needed beyond, you know, an application. Well, what are we supposed to put in there? But you can almost guess what it will be, it 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 will be this master plan. I think the way Austin and John described it is exactly what they would want to see. And attached to that would be a um a an actual um use of funds. So, you know, if we i- i- if if we asked for two hundred thousand dollars, or I don't know what the limits are, that's what you need to find out. But if, you know, here, it it would be used in this way. And I'm pretty sure that's, it'll be along those lines. Um and we but we need the dead, we need the deadline, we certainly need this plan on the books to be able to do that.
She was talking about, you know, giving uh municipalities parks, you know, and that she could throw us in the mix. So that's, yeah.
So we need to understand that.
Yeah.
I know there's a, and I know they already know that there there is a, there are funds for specifically statewide. And this may be what she was talking about, specifically for playgrounds. Um it's in the budget for the current year of the cycle, I think. I don't know when the deadlines were, but it's the awarding is next March or May or as early as that. Um but you have to get your application in, so, yeah, I I we should find out the details. Both with that program, which has an address and people who can explain, and with her office directly. But we have a motion on the floor as to how to um uh proceeding with your today's uh today's uh. Um playground discussion, we've had it. I I think it the 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 motion was basically to um defer a discussion, which we have been. About the the specifics of the plan pending receipt of the draft plan in a format suitable for a master plan. Uh and to uh reach out uh to residents that um, you know, comment is still requested. And of course, when we have that document in hand, that that may be easier for everyone to respond to.
So so the we're talking about two different things, so what's the timing on this? Because is it a chicken and egg scenario?
Don't worry about.
No, I am, I'm I'm worrying about it because I'm wondering about timing, about are we gonna try to get this ready by the next meeting?
I don't see any way, we, what do you mean, ready?
We, so what we need, we need to have uh um more information, you're saying, I just want to just hear from the rec committee and from the um Playground Work Group. We want more um information or a document, right, that we can.
We need the document.
Review, and then where does the town um come into this?
Well, if we were to get that. Well, if we were to get that, if you, if we were to get the plan in a written form next Monday. And information that the deadlines for grants are, is December first or, you know, whatever. Then we could conceivably disseminate the plan by a, a Grove um, alert. And request comment and consider, you guys could consider acting in the.
So, so, okay, so the first, so there's like, but there's steps. So, so the, 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 the work group, right? First step is the work group comes up with a document, then the town is, gets to give feedback.
Yeah.
And then it's gonna go to the council for approval?
Yeah, that comes to the council.
Right, so we're not, so this is gonna take a few months, basically.
Well, I think one of the things that, that John was saying too is he was gonna reach out to the state.
Well, let's find out what the finance timing is. We, we would have to, we would have to give it, give it the fast track if it was sooner.
Yeah.
If the deadline's not till January or February or March, then.
I think she was.
Okay, always we missed the deadline.
Yeah, the, the money is gonna dry up, right? It, it sounded like, that's what she's saying. The money's there.
Yeah. She kind of said, I can get it for you, but you need to get it in there. So that's kind of.
And if we wait, it's gonna dry up.
So without holding the work group, right? That's, that's my guess.
No, we're not.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay.
I mean, only in the sense that we need, we actually need a document.
Right, right.
Documented plan, that's all.
Yeah. Can I, can I just add one thing to that?
Oh, you have beer?
Not tonight, Peter. I'm not, I'm not an alcoholic, man.
I'll say for me. Okay.
Um, yeah, I guess uh, just in terms of the feedback and timing thereof. I think one of the intentions of us presenting, you know, this vision for the. The plan for the plan for the plan, that's not really how bad it is, but you know, it feels like we're talking that way. Um, you know, the, our presentation in the August meeting was intended to begin the public discussion. And we have received feedback, like, you know, uh, forestry and beautification was very interested, Chris was very interested. We got a, a couple uh, bits of input from other concerned members of the community, which is all great. And I think we've all tried to address the things we've received to date. Uh, there are some plans to, to try to get together with F and B and, and the maintenance um, people one more time. Steve and, and Peter to try to, you know, tie up a couple of loose ends on what we have documented thus far. Um, of course, this, the more mature this is before we put it out to the community at, at large and you all. Um, you know, the higher the chances of success we'll have. Um, but, but I guess. My message here is like, we're, we would like to get input as soon as possible. And I don't think that the presentation that you will see in the document, which will be, it, it is currently. I mean, it's in draft form right now, right? So we've got about twenty pages of, of explanation thus far and are still building out certain sections of this. And then adding some supporting documentation and all that sort of thing. It's, it's gonna be a large package of information. But on the flip side, the, the, the general approach and message is very consistent still with what we presented in August. So my point here is like, don't wait to see this big pile of, of information before you decide you are ready to review and give us comments. Like, we want comments as we're building it out so that we have stuff kind of addressed as, as we go along. Rather than having to go back and rework a bunch of different stuff. We want this, you know, to be, to be as smooth as possible to get from, when we finally have it all packaged together through the approval process.
So my grandson is eight months old now. So you have probably like ten years before he will be able to use the playground.
I don't know, man. I was, our kids out on the playground.
That's right.
Eighteen months.
And my kids stopped using the playground at ten years old.
Okay.
Quick question, John, if you don't mind, uh, uh, about process. Uh, if we were to turn in the, the comprehensive plan in document form, yeah, it, it could be two weeks, four weeks or whatever. Uh, would you all as council review concurrently with what we present publicly? Let's say over uh, the, the listserv and the town bla- email blast? Or are you reserving the right to review it later? How would that work?
Well, we can only review it in a public meeting. We individually, a- anybody can review it if they have it. Um, we, you know, one can offer. Uh, it, it can generate questions. So what you're really asking is can we get all these questions as early as possible? So that when it comes to an actual public discussion, you know, it's, it's down to a very little um, controversy. And that's, that's the way I'd love it. It's always best if we can.
Exactly. Yeah, I think that's kind of my point and what Annie was speaking to is that um, to anyone's concerns that we can address now. And as we keep uh, documenting this and improving on our, the, the product, uh, we'd love to do that as we can. Um, but, but understood that, that we'll produce a document and still get comments and more feedback um, after that as well.
Well, yeah, it's. That, that's the document that will be the one that will be used. So you, you could expect that, so.
Sure.
Okay, and I, just one more clarification, because we've had discussions about this internally and it would be very helpful. So, you know, one of the questions Chris had was respect to safety of the e- equipment that's both there. And planned to be installed over the, you know, the course of the, of the life cycle of the project. Um, but, and you know, I think we have, we have asked for some guidance from the council and, and you, John. Um, you know, when you, when we have a chance to talk about this, maybe at the next meeting, like. Is the expectation that the safety standards of today would be, you know, incorporated into the current equipment? And, or in retrofitted? Or is this one of those things where we're going to basically, as time goes on. Replace certain pieces of equipment in certain parts of the park and just going forward, have them meet the uh, safety standards. And I don't want to get back into this whole deep safety standards process, conversation, obviously. But Mike, I put it to you for a discussion in your minds, where, where should we land on the safety standards?
Okay. At my house, the answer to a question that has three different sides is yes. So, yeah, my answer to that is yes. You know, I, I think we can, you know, if the master, if you guys want to recommend upgrading existing equipment. To meet current standards, you can put that as a proposed part of the master plan. If you want to put in it, we will um, meet the, the existing standards. Uh, at the time of equipment installation and, and consider um, um, upgrading. Uh, uh, um, previous, existing equipment as part of moving forward. You could say that and whatever your third one was, I already forgot. But um, yeah. I mean, it's what, what you, you, you guys have to decide what you want to propose.
Okay.
I think what we're asking is, we're, we're hoping to, to create a document that meets your approval. And we're not sure exactly what.
And you want the least controversial. Uh, 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 propositions that you can come up with. And you know what, with respect to this.
Yeah, I mean, our, 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 our attempt to minimize the controversy, for example, was we're not touching the merry-go-round. But there was a question about why we did that. And so we're not sure where, where that's coming from. Do you?
Yeah, yeah. So regarding the merry-go-round, I guess, as I'm scratching my head, trying to figure out, how is it that we've, you know, that we as a town collectively. In the playground working group, um, what is your selection criteria for the equipment that you want to move? Or that you want to remove? And, and uh, you know, that's, that's what I'm trying to understand. You know, because some of the, the equipment, as you found with the merry-go-round, right? It's in my mind, my language, I guess, is vintage. Um, and, 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 you know, there's some heritage. Uh, and, and there's a lot of reluctance for some of the equipment to, to disappear. Um, so, so what is the selection criteria that, that you guys and gals are, are applying? Uh, when you make these proposals, that, that's why the merry-go-round came in. You know, originally it was gonna, it was gonna be either removed or relocated. And then now it's back, repurposed, repurposed, you know, turned into a bench or whatever. Uh, but now because of the feedback that you got, and, and, and so the thing is, and that's what's driving this comprehensive plan, right? Um, one piece of equipment created so much interest. Uh, but this comprehensive plan is looking at the entire complex, playground complex. Uh, so again, you know, what is it? What's going through your work groups' discussions and minds and how you're making your selections? How you are planning to, to, um, yeah, just to get a better understanding of, of, of your thought process? Does that make sense?
Yeah, we, we, we responded with that. So I know we, we sent you all the responses this morning. So, you know, when you get a chance, you can look at it too and.
I think question, the response to question number four specifically addresses the criteria that we're, that we're considering as we make these decisions. So, you know, part of this is obviously in reaction to feedback that we, this is another reason why we're seeking early feedback, right? Like the earlier versions of this group or the earlier phases of this, this effort, you know. You know, generated a lot of con- controversy or conversation around one spe- piece of information or one piece of equipment. And frankly, a lot of us don't understand the full attachment to. But okay, we're a community, we're trying to, you know, work with, within the structure of what everyone's comfortable with. To the extent we can and we can, we can compromise and we're okay with that. We will make some proposals, some things maybe people won't like. But like, the idea here is to try to be as uh, um, try to be as collegial about this process. And, and respect the history of this town, but still produce a, a, a park that, that everyone is happy with and feels like they're fully satisfied with. And, you know, I don't think that's an unreasonable goal for a frigging playground, right? So anyway, um, okay, I think we've talked.
Okay, guys. Well, I'm into this.
But just to just don't call it a master plan. George, Ed and I can tell you about that. It's not politically correct.
Comprehensive.
Yes, comprehensive plan. Yep. Barbara, you should have jumped all over that. That's your job. All right. Thanks, guys. That was great. Really good. Looking forward to the product.
Is there a vote to take?
Yes, we have a motion on the floor. Was it seconded?
I must say, what is it? It's to defer.
To defer substantive discussion, right? And uh.
About more substantive.
Yeah, so we're, we're looking for additional resident input. And uh, originally last month, we said, we discussed it today, that we were going to discuss it today. And we just. And so.
That was actually a good discussion.
Double receive the plan.
Or receive the plan, yeah.
It's an I second that.
Also, I didn't, so I didn't second anything.
Oh, you seconded too. I, I double seconded.
All right. I knew it seconded.
All right. Okay, really? Okay.
Further consideration, all in favor? All right, everybody agrees.
Okay.
Off we go. Maples, renovation of Maple Spring. We, we need a motion. We need a motion.
We need a motion. Oh. Uh, what, what's, what are we voting on? I'll, I'll make a motion of the renovation, uh, I, so I'll, I'll, I'll put together a motion that we approve the plan. The renovation plan for Maple Spring. I think it's stage one or whatever you call it, Pat. Yeah.
Yes, sure. Stage one, which is, which is.
It's the spring and the stream.
And the streams.
So it's rebuilding, rebuilding the, the spring and fortifying the spr- the, the spring as it goes down to the lake. But not touching the fence line or any proposal.
I'll second it. John, true it's.
Right.
I'm second.
You seconded it.
Okay. Yes, we have some discussion. The, the cost, there's a cost estimate from our J landscapers, it was in your materials.
Oh, that was convenient. Yes, yeah.
Uh, so it's, it meets our, um, the, the woods committee has a budget for this.
Ten thousand dollars.
So, um. That, that's the motion. Do we have discussion of the motion? Everybody, this is, they know what, who is here on the renovation of the spring and the string. Ready for vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous. All right, there is one more part to this, this um, this item. Um, and does anybody uh, wish to make a motion?
I would make a motion.
Accessing Maple Spring.
I would make a motion to defer discussion.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor of deferring session? All right, we've discouraged deferred discussion on accessing, which I, I take just from that. Motion and uh, previous, um, the previous discussion is we will readdress the act, question of accessing. When somebody will propose. Make a proposal for that, right? Okay, terrific. All right, so the, the, it brings us to the other regular business town council, I'll stand guys. The town council reports, uh, picked out a few things of note as usual. Respecting MacArthur Hall from Chris, um, that draft RFPs are being prepared to, for the repair. And painting the town hall exterior and windows. And to resurface refresh the floors in the cap. This is in his report, I'm just pulling this out. Also from Chris on the Meadows Committee, um, the Meadows Committee um, has uh, posted. A summary document describing progress in the middle restoration project. It will be on their webpage. Unfortunately, I couldn't find it. But there's a link here in the agenda to that document, um, which they intend to keep updated. As the middle restoration process continues. Yeah, from the recreation committee from Peter, uh, is uh, again, a, and the, and. The intention of the rec committee to recommend kiosks to be placed around the town. Uh, for posting information about events. Uh, and that recommendation to purchase an installation will be forthcoming, possibly in time for October. And finally, from Mary on the sustainability committee, um, that a group uh, from the sustainability committee. And other residents, including Peter, myself. Um, met to discuss the MacArthur Hall energy audit report, which as you know, uh, was being conducted. Not at town expense, uh, remade, paid for. Um, and it's been received, uh, it included cost estimates for various improvements in heating and cooling, which the town could consider. And this evaluation group is uh, considering um, what recommendations may make sense for the town's consideration. Um, not all of them, um, you know, would, would necessarily qualify for various incentive reasons. So that's an ongoing thing and um, you can expect to see sooner or later for some proposals of that. They all require money, they all require budgets. Okay, that's all. Anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I think Chris, it's, it'll take a minute. Can you just give us an update on where we are with the commercial corner as far as? I'm a law, I'm.
Commercial corner, the council is waiting for the next, the ZTA proposal. From the planning commission, so that we can proceed on the required timeline for doing a zoning text amendment. To, for, for.
At, at the last meeting, we, we, we. At the last meeting, we, we, we said that we looked at.
And you said that the HPC was evaluating it. You weren't ready to send it to.
But the planning commission, so that they're, the HPC reports to the, to the council. So, we, right? So is that what, is that what, that's holding up? The HPC is holding us up? I don't mean to say.
I don't know who's holding it up, but the council has not received a formal. Here is, here is a zoning text amendment. Uh, that we have, um, approved. And you, you, you now must consider it because that's the, that's the.
Right.
The rules for, for a planning authority.
I thought we had done that.
I sent you, I sent you the town attorneys.
Yeah.
Georgia, did you, you ever say that?
Uh, yeah, we, we can, we can make that formal transfer happen.
Yeah, well, we start the clock. As you know, there's a clock, there's, I wish that.
Yeah, okay.
No, didn't get that started.
I saw where the ones that are pulling it up. No. It's yours. If, if we're recording this, I would have something funny to say, but be honest.
All right, everybody else has anything? The next meeting is Monday, October thirteenth.
I will not be there.
Mary says she won't be, you won't be able to.
I'll be in Italy. So, no.
Lucky you. There's a bit of Chinese food there.
Okay, so Mary won't be present, Rob? Okay, all right. Then, uh, getting objection, meetings in adjournment.
Great job.
That was a long one.
Are you waiting for the husband? Make nice to us in the house? Cause it looks like you've already picked it.
Yeah, we have section.
I'm gonna ta- I'm gonna go talk to Ryan. He came here with. Yeah, no, but, yeah, so he can, he can make that connection for me.
If you're gonna make the connection with him. Get his structural. They used to build the bridge.
Yeah.
And what our priorities are, we're trying to get these. We can have a use, usability. And, um, we, we need to know.
I'll be, I'll be talking through the whole process. It's not gonna be like.
They evidently missed.
Just to see the.
I said, I've been turning on this widget. I was looking at another email. He sent the.
What's happening?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just, well. That's what I've been saying.
So, anyway.
Oh, M L's, but it's a bit, M L. Remote. Yes. That's what I'm getting. I, actually, I, you know, I go out, I say I'm good, it's not my bill. It just needs to get. It's not just me, if you don't like it. If you agree with what I have, and you still. Don't think it is an issue.
As far as walking across. Sure, sure. So I was not across. So I was, I wanted to. So sure, just confirming, but I can understand this. And so.
I read one guy's. You know.
Realistically.
They want me to do their work for that. We don't want to make so much work for us in the aftermath, like we keep. Anyway, that's why. Yeah, I, I'll get it done. Yeah, deal with all the possible.
My Apple two? So you are. I am definitely. Yeah, back in the day, it was, couldn't pick this up on Microsoft.
Let us pray. You try and give us eagle bad. But also, I hope he's not pretty much like, he is important, you know, engineers look at those products, products different than doing a site.
That stuff is. But would you? Well, it's a totally good ask.
I think the, the large for you know, is a very old, after stretch, it's supposed to be six things to use up for you. Other stretch. What's gonna happen over time if it doesn't have all the, the structure supported, it's gonna start to. That's not an immediate thing.
Well, I was gonna ask you that.
So. But then we gotta.
Wednesday, I'm gonna have to figure out why this alarm's going off.
It does seem like eagle scout. That whatever project. There's a call, something, a statement that says something about. And it has no relation to longevity. And so technically. He did it. Just on that basis, we should get the fact. The fact that we decided. Is about. There's no guarantee that most of projects. I don't know how he's getting.
You go down to.
That's what's saying, up to the point where he completely. Why weren't you talking to the president? I, I think exactly, it's not necessarily. You just say, okay, now we're talking to our people and we're gonna try to.
But it was sitting right in.
Where does this one go? There's a long black. It was, it was connected.
Oh, the extension for the.
It was connected to this.
That goes. In this box.
In this box, okay.
Thank you for approving Maple Spring.
I didn't think there was any doubt about.
You have one of the system.
Yeah, and she's thanked me as for. Three of the counselors to Maple Spring to show them. This was a no brainer.
I, I need, I need to go back and look at it. I haven't been back there in years.
It surprised me, uh, you know. I thought. Much worse than I'm finishing. The lack of any condition, but it's, it's probably there is there.
Yeah. It never, you never did get it.
Oh, but it was working when I put it in here.
Yeah.
With the rust.
Unbelievable.
It's because I'm here. Smaller, cause I can't make it work. And then I think it's all my. It seems true. It must be for something back here maybe.
What were they in? There shouldn't have been any of these boxes.
They were on the table when I. All right, so we're gonna. You have to turn it off there, John, or can I just unplug it?
Uh, let me turn, shut it down. Prefer to do it the right way, that's what they always tell you. There, you can take it, oh, you can take all of this apart, this off. That can come back.